Good morning and welcome to the Landmarks Preservation Commission's Public Hearing and Public Meeting of March 4th, 2025. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance. I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland. Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson. Commissioner Lutfi.
Here.
Commissioner Master.
Here.
Good morning again and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting of March 4th, 2025. This meeting is being held in person in our public hearing room on the ninth floor of One Center Street. We're also holding it via Zoom for anyone who would like to participate remotely, and it is also being livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And we're going to begin this morning with two public meeting items, one of which has had our public hearing already and is back today with revisions in response to our comments at that public hearing. The other one is an item that we read into the record on February 25th, and we'll be reviewing for the first time today, and we'll open up the hearing, and then we'll move to our public hearing agenda for new applications for work on designated properties. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
All right, and I think we need to pause just for a second to check the YouTube connection. I'm getting report that there's no sound review. Oh, got an update. I think it's working now. Thanks, sir. All right. All right, we'll start today's Preservation Department Public Meeting Agenda with Public Meeting Item Number One, LPC 23-09523. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 267, Lot 14, 39 Sydney Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an altered Greek Revival style row house built in 1846. The application is to alter the front facade and reconstruct a stoop. This was last presented at the public hearing of November 19th, 2024, and no action was taken at that time. The applicants have made revisions in response to your comments, and we'll present them after we open the proceedings.
All right, we'll do that right now. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, applicants may begin.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ryan Zeke, Preservation Staff. This item was last heard at the public hearing and meeting on November 19th, 2024. The proposal at that time...
Brian, the applicant has control of the presentation. Switch it.
Yeah.
Okay.
The proposal at that time was to alter and redesign the front facade and reconstruct a stoop. The previous proposal is shown between the existing conditions photo on the left and the current proposal on the right. This included recreating a Greek revival-style brick facade by removing the stucco cladding, ironwork, and design details of the upper floors. At the hearing, the Commissioners present did not support the redesign of the facade, as was part of a significant later alteration in the early 20th century. However, Commissioners present expressed a consensus of support for reconstructing a stoop and lengthening the parlor floor windows, and suggested re-studying the door and window alignments and proportions. The applicants have returned with a revised proposal addressing those comments. Few months have passed since this was last heard, so I'll quickly walk us through the background. Here we see the building's mid-block location on Sydney Place in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The 1940s tax photo is on the left and current conditions are on the right. For context, here is the building and the streetscape. On the top, we see the previous proposal and the current proposal beneath. As currently proposed, the stucco cladding, ironwork, and design details will be retained. The scope has been reduced to reconstructing a stoop, lengthening the parlor windows, and installing aluminum-clad wood four-over-four double-hung replacement window sashes. Also, the brownstone rustication at the basement, which was added sometime between the 1940s and the time of designation, will be replaced by smooth stucco matching the upper floors and as shown in the 1940s tax photo. These elevations show the existing condition and previous proposal to the left with the current proposal on the right. It should be noted that the rooftop bulkhead and mechanical units are part of a separate application and are not before the Commission for Review. Here we see the current proposal in the context of the row houses to either side. And here we see the existing entrance in the upper left, along with photos showing other entrances on Sydney Place at the top. The bottom row shows examples of Commission-approved proposals to reconstruct stoops, including 36 Skirmerhorn Street, also in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District on the left, and 34 West 12th Street in the middle, and 269 West 11th Street on the right, which are both in the Greenwich Village Historic District. Here we see section details of the proposed parlor entrance and stoop. And this slide shows the proposed aluminum-clad wood four-over-four double-hung sashes. And in this slide, we see larger-scale details of the proposed entrance. And this slide shows comparative elevations of the lower floors and the area basement level plans. Now, to answer any questions about the proposal, we have the applicant, Kiva O'Sullivan, joining us via Zoom. We hand back control.
I'd like to ask the applicant if they'd like to add anything at this point.
Hi, good morning. Hi, good morning. I think Ryan covered pretty much everything very consistently, so thank you. But no, our aim here is to retain the overall historic narrative of the building and try to keep that while still, you know, achieving a new entryway stoop, meeting the previous comments of the Commissioners. So we hope we've done that today.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, could you just discuss the door detail and the, you know, railings, you know, what exactly you plan for that? It's a little unclear.
Yes, of course. So for the new entryway door, it'll be a new, a double-leaf solid wood widened door entry. We have tried to bring forward some of the designs in the existing doorway with the enframent. That sits proud of the existing facade. So we've carried forward that where it wraps around the entryway and into the recessed doorway. So, you know, there are, we're trying to take elements from what is already existing. The railing, the existing railing in the areaway will be largely retained. We want to keep as much of that as possible with the new stoop railing to be kept as simple as possible, to try stay in line with the existing design. We don't want anything too detailed or ornate, and that would contrast against what's already there.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Yeah, the stairs for the stoop look like they're brownstone, and then the frame around the door is brownstone, and yet, from the historic photos, there was no brownstone. Is there a logic of why you're doing that?
I think, well, we want to keep the existing, or the proposed stoop to be a tinted brownstone stucco, to remain consistent with the other stoops along the block. And then because of the new entryway, the way, you know, it's going to be joining that enframent for consistency's sake, that we propose that that would also be a brownstone stucco. But we are also happy to take onboard suggestions on that if the Commission thinks otherwise.
Just a follow-up on the sort of door enframent. Did you, it's a fairly simple square frame, and had you been thinking about, a simple design is not detracting, or did you think about how it might blend in with the style of the facade?
I think the, as the facade sits right now, it's quite, it is quite simple. A lot of the detailing is in the ironwork on the sills, as you can see. So yes, it was to keep with that. It was to keep with some semblance of what the existing enframent shows, where it has the detail around the immediate door, but the outer layers have just that kind of steady stepping nature to them. We didn't want an exact replica because it is not the exact same door. So it is trying to keep with that simplified facade that we already see before us.
Any other final questions? Yes, Commissioner Chapin.
Wondered, the baskets look like they, you know, the flower baskets, so to speak, whatever, little balconets look like they might, well, they've been there since 1940. I was wondering if we think they're original.
We do. There's also some ironwork at the basement openings. I'm not entirely sure that's also from that earlier era, but it does look like older ironwork, and it has some curlicue elements, kind of like the baskets at the parlor level. And actually, if we could also just go to the slide, I think it may be 11, but it's got some existing condition photographs. I think it's worth just looking at the photo on the top left that shows the existing basement level entrance around. There you go. As the applicant suggested, the sort of protruding part is flat and square at its outer extents, but you can see there are a few levels of reveals, and then in that compound pointed arch in those recessed areas are some floral motifs and some other carved elements down at the base. So most of the detail is kind of inward of that outer frame, but it is kind of flat and square-ish towards the, towards the outer edges.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner? Ready to discuss? Commissioner Goldblum, do you want to do a quick preview of this, or you'll follow along? Okay. Okay. All right, so I think we can move to our discussion, and I just want to note for the record that we did receive three letters opposing the reconstruction of the stoop, one from the Brooklyn Heights Association, one from the Victorian Society of New York, and one from an individual. And the last time we saw this, this was a building that we noted was built in 1846, but redesigned in the early 20th century, and with a stucco facade and the ornate ironwork and the removal of the stoop. And we did, at the last time we saw this, it was a proposal to return the entire facade to its Greek revival appearance. And at that time, we, in our discussion, we all, I think unanimously felt that this early 20th century redesign was a significant design and that it should be maintained. But everyone present at that time did say that they would be open to introducing a stoop if it could be constructed in a way that related to the style of the facade and otherwise maintain the style of the facade. And so the applicants have come back today doing just that. They have, they're keeping the facade intact, but they are moving the entrance back up to the parlor floor and reintroducing a stoop. And we've just had a discussion about some of the details of the door enframent and the ironwork. Most of the areaway ironwork is to remain, but the stoop ironwork would obviously be new. All right, so we'll begin our discussion, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Yes, okay. So if you could, my concern right now is I want to see as little change as possible. They've made significant progress except for the whole stoop entrance door area. First of all, I don't think it should be brownstone. I think it should match the color of the building as it does now. Secondly, the door, I'm not sure why it needs to be a double door. I would try to do a single door similar to what is there now at the entrance, less ornate. And, and then the railing, work with staff to work on the details, but I just think that it, making that brownstone is making the entrance stick out, and that wasn't what was there before. I understand they want a stoop, but they should keep it in as much as possible tied to the existing design.
Commissioner Chen.
Same here. I think the applicant should work with the staff on the surround, the door, and the railing details as well. As for the brownstone, I defer that to the staff.
Commissioner Chapin.
It's, I think it's very good. They're replacing the stoop in this case, and this building has some very nice detail preserved on the building throughout, which is, including those baskets, but also the detail on the building itself. I think that, you know, they're, actually, they're proposing a color now that we requested them to do, so I think, I believe, so that's fine. And I think that I would like them to work with the staff on the door, the door surround, and the railings to see what they can do to get something that's most appropriate for the, you know, the restoration they're proposing. There may be some, as I said, I think, I think possibly the railing would have been more ornate, and I think that the, I'm not so concerned as they are about preserving what's there now because they're, they're moving to a different design. So, I mean, back to the original stoop. So something that will fit in as, as well as possible with both the building and the streetscape. And I think the staff can give them some helpful suggestions about those issues.
Right, and I do think that the stoop is a question because, of course, when this building was designed, redesigned in the 20th century, it didn't have a stoop. And so when you reintroduce a stoop, do you do something that matches this light color, but no other stoop on the block does? Every other stoop is brownstone. So I think it's, it's a kind of a tricky thing. Yeah, that's the building or the streetscape. It's tricky. So something to think about, Commissioner Lutfi.
Yeah, thanks for raising that point, because I think in addition to looking at the building, it's important to look at the context on the street. And, you know, if we look at the white facade as a white facade, you know, there should still be brownstone steps. So I'm completely fine with that. And I agree with Commissioner Chapin about the railing on the steps. It's really very, very simple, especially in relationship to some of the other metalwork on the, you know, windows and, and the fence. So I think that the applicant should work with staff on that, as well as the door surround. I'm completely fine with the doors being.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Lutfi. I think, I think everything is appropriate. They should work with staff on the door surround and the ironwork on the stoop, and, you know, consider not only this building, but really the streetscape. But other than that, I can find it appropriate.
Yeah, so I got, did a quick, quick look, and I, I wasn't here for the first time that it was presented, I guess. I think that the brownstone for the stoop is fine, but they should keep or replicate the rustication, because that's kind of what I think grounds it.
Although I think that rusticated stucco base is not part of the redesign, right? So it's not...
It's also not original or historic to that period alteration.
It's not original or historic.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But it still is a traditional detail.
I kind of think that it's, I kind of think that it's, it would help seat the brown, the stoop in a nice way. And it kind of would do what the stoop is doing, which is to kind of join it to, to the Victorian block in a, in a way that kind of makes sense from a dullcardish kind of look at how a building like this might have developed. I think it'd be okay. And I agree about the metalwork. I think it should be brought into harmony with the rest.
Okay, so you're suggesting keeping the stucco base as well as the stoop?
Keep or replicate it. I think, I think what makes the brownstone stoop look kind of out of left field is that there's, there's nothing else on the building that's brownstone. But I think that the building now has that element, and it kind of works both for the block and for the building. So I kind of think that it's...
How do others feel about that?
I don't think the way they presented it is fine myself.
Yes, so we have five who would support it as is, I think. Whether finding the details of the door surround and ironwork, are you comfortable with that? Okay. And the railing, yeah.
Consider that part of the details. With regard to LPC 23-0952339 Sydney Place, Brooklyn Heights District, an altered Greek Revival style row house built in 1846, application is to alter the front facade and reconstruct a stoop. I note that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I also note that the front facade was altered, the stoop was removed, and the fourth floor was added in the early 20th century, and that the rustication was added to the basement prior to designation of the Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the brownstone tinted rustication at the basement is not original to the early 20th century alteration, therefore, its removal will not eliminate any significant historic fabric and will bring the building closer to its appearance after its later significant alteration. That the reconstruction of the stoop and parlor entrance and the lengthening of the parlor windows will be in keeping with row houses found in the streetscape and throughout the Historic District, and the introduction of these select changes will be consistent with the evolution of the building over time. That the basic design and materiality of the stoop and parlor floor entrance, featuring a brownstone tinted stucco-clad stoop and paired wood panel doors, will relate harmoniously to the building and other stoops and entrances found within the streetscape. That the proposed 4044 double-hung windows will match the windows installed as part of the significant later alterations in terms of configuration, operation, and detail. That the proposed metalclad wood windows will not be perceptible from the public thoroughfare, and the proposed black finish will be, will harmonize with the building and the streetscape, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special character of the building of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. How would I find that the details of the proposed parlor floor door entrance around and doors are not well-developed, and that the design and detail of the stoop ironwork do not relate well to the other ironwork found at the building? Therefore, I recommend that the design of the entrance around and doors and stoop ironwork be further developed in consultation with the staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi.
Aye.
Commissioner Master.
Aye.
Seven in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
That's approved, and please continue to work with the staff on those details.
Thank you.
Next item is public meeting item number two, LPC 25-07011, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, Block 1675, Lot 30, 348 McDonough Street in the Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. This is an Italianate-style row house built in 1873. Application is to legalize the construction of a rooftop bulkhead without LPC permits. This was read into the record last week at the public hearing of February 25th, 2025. It was not presented, so we will take, see the presentation for the first time today and take testimony, and begin the presentation after we open the hearing.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to open the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hello, my name is Zuna Amair. Due to the unfortunate timing, Sarah Jeffries, the architect of this project, is unable to make it herself, having recently undergone surgery. So I'm here on Sarah's behalf, as a member of the Sarah Jeffries Design Team, to ask the Commissioners for a certificate of appropriateness by amending the existing LPC permit to include a notice of compliance for a seasonally minimally visible bulkhead on the roof of our project at 348 McDonough Street. The bulkhead is not visible from anywhere, from the, for the majority of the year, and only minimally visible for two to three winter months from the side street through a gap in the street wall on Stuyvesant Avenue over the non-primary facade. I'm trying to... Yeah, there you go. So you can see here the block plan and some context. For context, the brownstone is a two-duplex sustainable renovation project that started in 2018, and in 2020, the proposed design called for a bulkhead and handrails on the roof, and an LPC staff member, Dina, who's no longer at Landmarks, came out to the site to inspect the mock-up we built, and she met with William Nasser from our office, who also is no longer with SJD. And William coordinated a mock-up of the bulkhead on the roof and met Dina on site to review, who had verbally approved the work with no changes requested. And then the clients of the project changed their mind due to budgetary reasons to not build the bulkhead, and SJD has revised, had revised the landmark submission accordingly, which was approved, and the project was built without, was approved without a bulkhead and handrails on the roof. So in 2023, the design was adjusted and called for a sky hatch with stairs to provide service access to the roof. This sky hatch was not approved by DOB, stating that a bulkhead was required for a four-story residence. As a result, the bulkhead was reinstated and approved by DOB. Our team was under the impression that this readjustment did not require an additional inspection, having had the bulkhead mock-up previously approved by Dina. Unfortunately, this was before the web-based portico system, so there is no documentation of this exchange, since both of the employees are no longer employed at Landmarks and at Sarah Jeffries Design. The reality is that DOB shouldn't have approved this work without an LBC amended permit first, and had we known that this was not legally approved by Landmarks, we would not have gone through the, we have, we would have gone through the necessary steps to have had this proposed bulkhead reviewed and approved. So we went back to Landmarks to get the rooftop railings and bulkhead approved with a notice of compliance, and were notified by Landmarks that they could not, that they could only approve the rooftop railings as they are not visible from any streets, but that we would need to seek a certificate of appropriateness for the bulkhead as it is minimally partially visible from the side street during the winter months, hence why I am here today. For comparison, it's important to note the several possible bulkheads in and around the block of McDonough Street, which are all visible from their primary facades, to serve as a precedent for a partially visible bulkhead, which has become necessary to access the roof of this house. In comparison, our bulkhead is not visible from the primary facade. It is only visible in the heart of winter from the secondary street, 215 feet away, even, and even when the surrounding foliage is desolate, it's still difficult to see the bulkhead and make out what's actually there. These are images from most of the year for nine months, and then in the winter months, you can kind of see the view here. So the last part is that for context, this house was renovated to retain its historic details, while updated with increased insulation and heating and cooling systems to make it more sustainable and energy efficient. There are two energy-efficient electric heat pump water heaters for each unit, and the unit for the top duplex was added in a small mechanical closet in the bulkhead on the roof as approved by DOB. It's necessary for this electric water heater to be located on the roof in order to maximize efficiency as it takes advantage of gravity, allowing water to flow down as opposed to getting pumped several floors from the cellar up into the dwelling unit, as well as the cellar being part of the lower duplex, so the hot water heater could not go there. We realize that this is a very unusual and unfortunate situation. We are truly regretful for this, and Sarah Jeffries Design has worked very closely with Landmarks and community boards on several townhouse projects. We're currently working on three different Brooklyn townhouse projects together, and we are very detail-oriented and contentious about following Landmarks protocol, and we realize this is an unfortunate situation. We have had, always had an excellent relationship with Landmarks and have all, have all our projects approved over the past 22 years. We design sensitive projects that closely consider the neighboring and historic context, and we very much hope Landmarks will grant the certificate of appropriateness for this project to be signed off and wrapped up. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi?
Did we move a bulkhead on us? Is that correct?
We did look at a mock-up of a bulkhead. It's not clear if it's exactly like this, and that's what we were just explaining, that there's the, the heat pump equipment there. heat pump equipment there. So at any rate, this has some visibility, and we'll look at it as we would any application. Okay, thank you. Um, and the visibility, as applicant said, is, is through this gap over the rear facades and behind a lot of trees that are even dense without leaves, so. Any, are there any other questions? What's the finish of the bulkhead?
It's a very dark gray stucco. So it kind of blends into the background.
Let's see if we have any public testimony. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Right, not seeing anyone in the room who would like to speak. I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Roger Manning, I will be promoting to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Oh, he declined?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm sorry, yeah. I must have misclicked something here. I'm here for the Governor's Island item coming up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sorry.
No worries. All right, so I think there isn't anyone else to speak on this item, so we will move ahead with any final questions.
Oh, I did, sorry, I did want to note that the community board submitted testimony or a resolution supporting approval with the stipulation that there be no further construction on the project that is out of compliance with LPC plans and specifications.
Okay, great. I thought they weren't reviewing it. Okay. All right, so any final questions on this one? Okay, so let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing's closed, and we have this bulkhead, which was part of a larger project that went through multiple layers of review with LPC and the Department of Buildings and through an amendment, did get a bulkhead approved at the Department of Buildings. And they're seeking approval now from LPC. They didn't realize that it needed to come back to us at the time, so we'll look at it now as we would if we were looking at it in the first instance. And it's a bulkhead that is seen over the rear facade through this gap in the street wall on the side streets. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start?
Yeah, I, I think this is, you know, unfortunate, but we, we are going to check the base on if it's a new application, and obviously, you know, this is something that we, we do normally approve, even though with the limited visibility, but I do agree with the community board recommendation that no future incursion into this space without checking with the LPC.
Commissioner Chapin?
Uh, yeah, I, I think that the applicant has, you know, indicated clearly that they were not, they were trying to be compliant and, you know, it was an honest mistake, which is something that, you know, we don't hear as often as we would like when we have these issues of, you know, you know, not work without a permit, so. I, I think, you know, that they were trying to be responsible. I think that the, as far as the current situation, that it is minimally visible. If the foliage is out, obviously, it will be really obscured from that one oblique location. And so I, I think it's a provable risk.
Commissioner Lutfi? My fellow commissioners, it's minimally visible through the street wall, not visible at all from the front facade. Bulkhead is simple. The color is walnut blends. I also appreciate, even though it's not before us, the fact that they're making the building as energy efficient as possible. And it is nice to know that this is an applicant that has done a lot of work with us and seems to take landmarks, designations very seriously. Commissioner Master?
Appropriate.
Chair Goldblum?
I agree. It just sounds like they've been through the mill in terms of city bureaucracy. I feel bad for them. They certainly seem to have tried to do the right thing, so.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg?
Uh, I agree appropriate. I appreciate the fact that the apologizing. I think, as we've seen, there probably needs to be education in applicants and also the building department, which seems to approve things without landmarks approval. And I know when I go to, before I was on the commission, when I went to the building department, they always asked for it, so I don't know what's going on.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement on this particular case and will continue to, as we call it, try to educate our colleagues at both DOB and the public. So Commissioner Chen, would you make the motion?
In a matter of LPC twenty-five dash oh seven oh eleven, three forty-eight Madugo Street, Stuyvesant Heights Historic District. The application is to legalize the construction of a rooftop bulkhead without Landmarks Preservation Commission permit. Noting the building's scale, style, materials and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Stuyvesant Heights Historic District, I recommend approval, finding that the bulkhead is not visible from Madugo Street over the primary facade, that the bulkhead is only seasonably visible through a gap in the street wall and over the secondary facade at an oblique angle, that the bulkhead has a utilitarian gray stucco finish and is simple in form and scale is similar to other existing rooftop accretions found within the Historic District. That, and that the work does not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or Historic District.
And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Chair Carroll? Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi? Commissioner Master? Seven in favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the public hearing agenda.
We'll start with public hearing item number one. LPC twenty-five dash zero four five two two. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Brooklyn Block two twenty-one Lot one, seventy-five Hicks Street, the Plymouth Church of the Pilgrims in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is an Anglo-Italianate style church designed by Joseph C. Wells and constructed in eighteen forty-nine to fifty and an eclectic federal style parish house and school designed by Woodruff Leaming and built in nineteen thirteen. Application is to install mechanical equipment with screening on the rooftops.
Good morning. My name is Molly Martinez. I am the executive administrator of Plymouth Church. We respectfully present this proposal for your consideration so that we may install an HVAC system on our campus. It's no mystery how oppressively hot the last four summers have been. And this past summer in particular, we hit a critical point. Some parts of our building got as hot as one hundred and sixteen degrees, leading us essentially to be at work stoppage in the summer. This meant no children's programming, no tours, no rentals, no major events, none of the things that can help us continue to serve the Brooklyn Heights community. To that end, we enlisted our architect, Tom Feniman, and engineering firm Goldman Copeland to come up with a proposed HVAC design that provides us what we need and honors our design as a historic landmark and sacred site. And with that, I turn it over to our architect, Tom Feniman.
Oh, great. Good morning, everybody. My name's my name's Tom Feniman. I'm an architect, and as Molly said, I've been working with them for the last five years to put together not only this project, but also kind of looking at their entire campus. But with this, specifically, we're looking at the mechanical systems for both the parish house, which is seventy-five Hicks, and the gymnasium building. Go through, here it is, its location within the Historic District, right on Orange Street and between Orange and Cranberry Street along Hicks. These are some historic photographs showing primarily of the sanctuary building, which we have no proposed work at this time. But you can actually see the, in the distance on the far left of both photographs, the building of seventy-five Hicks. Is the historic sandborne map showing the complex? And then one of the tax photos of the building at, actually, the gymnasium building. These are some existing photographs of the conditions. This is the playground area on the north side of the campus where there currently is a swimming pool, and that's where two of, or actually, three of the units would be located. Uh, this is walking, or walking around the campus, again, still on the north side. And this is the south side where Beecher Garden is, and then the seventy-five Hicks building on the left. These are the primary elevations of seventy-five Hicks building, and I should add, when you're standing in front of the street on both sides of this building, you would not be able to see the proposed equipment. Yep. This is the gymnasium building on Hicks. And these are the locations that we're proposing. I have a pointer here I can use. So this is the seventy-five Hicks building, and there's two units located above at the, next to the stair bulkhead. This is the gymnasium building. There's a large unit here that would feed the gymnasium, and then a smaller unit here that would feed the third floor. And then these are three units here that would feed the cellar, or sorry, basement space and first floor. And these are some elevation drawings showing the two units up on the roof, which are behind a copper ballast rod. These are the units that would be above the gymnasium, and we have a, an acoustic consult, excuse me, an acoustic consultant that recommended the installation of some sound control on two of the sides, but we've actually included it on all three sides of the unit. This is all the section along Orange Street. This is probably where it's most visible. Well, I'll have some views with the mockups in a minute, but this panel here would be made of a standing seam copper roof, or sorry, copper metal is what we're proposing, that area that'd be exposed. And the two unit, or sorry, three units that would be in the playground area, we were proposing a cedar fence that would screen those, so that they would not be visible. So with this, I mean, the unit, or sorry, the building is currently heated with steam, which we're trying to get off of. It has, the steam system has lots of problems in itself. And there are also quite a few window units that are being detrimental to the existing windows, so with the ability of adding these heat pump units within, throughout the building, we'd be able to eliminate quite a few of these window units that are located throughout the facade. There. You can see them. So here, some of the photographs with the mockups. I should add, though, so that the, one of the mockups blew down this past weekend, I heard, which it, it had been up since it had been up since Thanksgiving, so it's been up for quite a while, and I think it just wasn't really meant to be up quite that long. So this is a view from actually quite a distance along down the street from Hicks, where you can actually see, this is not actually the units, but this would be that copper faced acoustic panel that would be peeking up above the roof, and that's halfway down the street from Hicks, looking back towards the building. And this is, again, looking over the rooftop, this would be one unit that you'd be able to see through the ballast rod and peeking above from the backside of the building, looking diagonally across. And this is the one that's the most visible. This unit here, the actual, would be the acoustic screen, and behind it, you can actually see the mechanical equipment, but this would be faced with a copper faced standing seam panel. Uh, and there you can see it there. And this is visible from diagonally across from when you're standing in front of the church, looking across the Beecher Garden. And these, there's a lot of streets on this, or sorry, a lot of trees on this street, and this is the view looking further down Orange Street, looking over Hicks, and you can actually see through the trees, and this is during the wintertime. In the summertime, this would not be visible due to the amount of trees that are in the neighborhood. Uh, but the units above on that seventy-five Hicks. And this is further down the street on the other side, looking up, and you can see the, the units peeking up above. And again, when you're standing directly in front of the building on either Hicks or Orange, you would not be able to see those units. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I had two questions. When all the new equipment will be electric?
Correct.
And then, are you doing anything to add insulation to the building?
It's a difficult building to insulate.
I am. You said that could be an issue.
There are no real cavity spaces in the walls, and actually, the walls have another problem because for various reasons, we can't touch them too much. The gymnasium has a wonderful interior wood ceiling, so we have explored to potentially adding some insulation to the gymnasium, but there are other issues with heights and things there, so.
I realize it's a tricky issue and encourage you where you can to.
No, and with, with the gymnasium, I should add, we are looking at possibly putting a reflective roof on there, which would cut down the heat load.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony, and I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Judy Stanton, I will be promoting you to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Judy Stanton, speaking for the Brooklyn Heights Association. We are supportive of Plymouth Church's need to modernize its HVAC systems and address the challenges of climate change. We recognize that the church's team has made a diligent effort to examine alternative siding locations or types of equipment that would have minimized the visibility more than what they ultimately determined was feasible. As more landmark locations are making upgrades to their mechanical systems that may involve ever increasing amounts of visible equipment, we urge the commission to continue to review such applications carefully to achieve the best balance between functionality and visibility. For example, Plymouth Church's large grounds would have otherwise been a good candidate for ground source heat pumps if it were not for potential conflicts with the subway under Cranberry Street. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any other members of the public wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function. Like seeing none, I will note that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval with the following comments, noting that the office received several letters of objection echoed by neighbors at the community board meeting on the item that are outside LPC purview, but including the applicant's considerations of neighbor interest and property maintenance, and the community board urges the applicant to initiate regular communication with the Brooklyn Heights Association. The applicant stated that the church is working on a master plan, which includes upgrades to the Cranberry Street side of the property, and the community board believes this will alleviate many neighbors' concerns. And the community board looks forward to reviewing that master plan. And lastly, the community board appreciates the church's environmental modernization needs and enclosure around the most visible HVAC unit. Yes, they recommend approval.
Okay. Right, so I think we've heard supportive testimony. Right. So I think we've heard supportive testimony. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add at this time before we begin our discussion. Yeah, okay. All right. So we'll need to close the hearing and begin that discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Some.
Thank you. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. So we are looking at mechanical equipment on the rooftop of the the church school and the gymnasium that has been, I think, carefully cited and concealed in some cases with the copper standing copper clad screens. And and I do want to note that this is a very, very significant historic church and important to this community as well as to the history of the city. And I do appreciate the efforts to modernize it and keep it modern in terms of its energy use and efficiency, and also to be able to continue to do your important programming. So, you know, I appreciate the efforts put into this project here. And we will look at these units in terms of their visibility and I'll note that they are not visible over the primary facades on Hicks Street, but there are other incidental views where we do see pieces of it coming up. So Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start?
Yeah, I obviously think this is a very necessary addition to the church and their programming and for, you know, the function, the basic functioning of their institution. And this kind of accretion is something that we do approve for institutions generally. Leave it to the architects on the panel to discuss whether there's any, you know, further tweaks that could help with minimizing the views of it, but otherwise I think it's approvable as presented.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, this is a, you know, I really commend the applicants on a lot of levels. This is a difficult thing to do, as was mentioned, to to actually make these very important older buildings more efficient from an energy perspective. A 116 degrees in the middle of the summer sounds unbearable. I think I think they've done a terrific job to minimize visibility here. They're helped a little bit by the fact that this is kind of a complex of buildings with some accretions on the top, including the gym. And so since there's a lot going on, it's these accretions can blend into the landscape a little better. And I think the applicant has done things to assist them in that effort by, you know, painting the metal, using, you know, standing seam metal, by putting cedar fence in to screen the playground. I also cannot tell you how much I truly appreciate the removal of window units. That in and of itself is a visual, I, you know, I saw, especially on a building of this buildings like this. So I I can very enthusiastically approve this work.
Thank you, Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Chapin's comments. I just want to note in addition, I think some of the units are also hidden by the balustrade that exists there, which is very helpful. And I want to reiterate what Commissioner Lutfi said about the removal of the window units, how this is really going to enhance the building. So I find this appropriate.
Commissioner Goldblum?
I agree. I think it's appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I I agree it's appropriate. I appreciate the electrification and the thoughtfulness of the project. And I expect we'll be seeing many more like this.
All right, Commissioner Chen?
No disagreement here.
Okay, all right. So overall in agreement, Commissioner Chapin, would you make the motion?
Sure. In the matter of certificate of appropriateness, Brooklyn LPC 250452275 Hicks Street, Plymouth Church of the Pilgrims, Brooklyn Heights Historic District, an Anglo-Italianate style church designed by Joseph C. Wells and constructed in 1849 to 1850 and eclectic federal style parish house and school designed by Bridger Fleming and built in 1913. Application is to install mechanical equipment with screening on the rooftops. I note that the building's style scale materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage any significant architectural features, that the condensing units proposed at the roof of the main building will be partially screened by the historic roof balustrade. That the new mechanical platform and enclosure at the roof of the gymnasium will be visible in the context of a complex roof scape, including buildings of different scales and other existing roof elements. That the standing seam metal enclosure will harmonize with the color and texture of the gymnasium roof. That the proposed mechanical work will allow the removal of window units, windows units currently disrupting the historic fenestration pattern throughout the building. And that the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building or the Brooklyn Heights Historic District.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion? Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg?
Aye.
Mr. Goldblum?
Aye.
Mr. Lutfi?
Mr. Master?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed to motion pending.
That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number two, LPC 25 dash zero six one zero five, an application for a binding report in the borough of Manhattan, block 111, lot one, Governor's Island, building 301 in the Governor's Island Historic District. This is a Neo Georgian style public school building designed by Eric Kibben, built in 1934 and later altered in 1956 to 60. Application is to modify entrances, install ramps and stairs, and install HVAC equipment.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Angel Ayon. I'm the principal of Ayon's Studio Architecture and Preservation. And I'm really excited to be here today to share with you a project we've been working on for a while that relates to a small but really interesting building in Governor's Island.
Oh, you have to use the laptop to advance. Click on it. There we go.
A note from Governor's Island, from the trust for Governor's Island, was really excited about this project just to convey the fact that this is an intervention on an existing building within the historic district that is made to turn this former school building into offices for businesses related to climate resiliency. And it's a project that they have been teaming up with BJH Advisors and North Revert. And this is a building wide intervention that aims to have lead goal certification, all electrical building and so on, and a lot of emphasis on climate resiliency. The building is located within the boundaries of the Governor's Island Historic District. It's just on the southern tier of the of the district, just across the water from Yankee Pier. So this is a waterfront building. And this is important because there's some of the issues that we're going to discuss later related to that. We don't have a lot of historic photographs on the building, but in a nutshell, I can tell you that this is a building that is a result of three main interventions. There's an original building, 18 to 1934, which is the small building in the center that has the steep roof and a cupola that was altered in 1955 with what we call the west wind and the north wind. And then later, 1959, 1960, it was expanded to the east with what we call the east wing. Here's a photograph of the building as seen today from Yankee Pier. Those three wings just really harmonized tremendously. And this is just a single building. It's just there is a consistency in terms of the character, the continuity, the horizontality of the place and the emphasis of the original building and the cupola and the steep roof that is very remarkable. This also emphasized the fact that the building is extremely visible from Yankee Pier. And if I were to go back quickly, one issue that I didn't mention is that the main address for the building is 301 Comfort Road. This is Comfort Road. This is Kemble Road. So one of the things that we're proposing is to simply revert the building's historic entrance from Comfort Road to Kemble Road, just because when you are on the pier, you may want to just make sure that you, as you come into the building, you kind of want to get in there. You don't want to have to go around to the historic entrance. So that's one intervention that we're proposing. And this this photograph can show you why is that so prominent? The other thing that I want to to concentrate on this is that, look at this is a very shallow building. It's about 20 feet high from the ground to the top of the pan of it. So it's very shallow. It's in Governor's Island. So you can really from very far away, even from the pier. So we were very concerned about putting mechanical equipment on the roof and trying to avoid a situation where we just have a sprinkle of mechanical equipment that will be very visible and very distracting from the symmetry and majesty of this building. So we made a concerted effort to concentrate all the mechanical equipment on three points on the north, east and west wings, and to put them all together in a cluster and enclose them within a mechanical enclosure so that what you can see will be just that enclosure and not a sprinkle of a series of mechanical equipment. So this is also a photograph of the mockups that we've built. This is the rooftop enclosure proposed for the east wing. This is the one for the north, for the west wing. And this is the one for the north wing that is also really visible from multiple points of view. If you get off the pier and you start approaching the building, this is how you, this is what you would see. And the mockups show you that anything that you put on the building, on the roof is going to be very prominent. And therefore, the reason why we concentrate them in these clusters. On Kemble Road, looking looking west, this is the front facade and this is what we call the east. And it kind of gives you a sense of the lawn, the length of this building along the 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 main street, but also the prominence of this original portion of the building, which is where we're trying to relocate, proposing to relocate the main entrance. On the north facade on Comfort Road, this is the existing condition. They had a nonoriginal, they installed a ramp, a non ADA compliant ramp to provide accessibility to this building. To install their ramp, this ramp, they removed half of the original stoop that was there. And this photograph also show you some of the visibility of the markup of the rooftop markup that we we've been proposing. On the west wind, you can tell that there's an existing condition that we want to bring to your attention. These, at the end of the building, these doors will be Egress doors. The challenge is that there is a step right on the door. So in order to, for these doors to be made co-compliant and be part of the Egress path, we need, we need to level the floor on both sides of the Egress door. So part of what we are proposing is pretty much rebuilding those tubes and making them higher. These are more closer photographs that show the extent of decay on these massive granite slabs that have been shifted over the years. And and it's about time that they could be rebuilt and then taking this as an opportunity to really not only rebuilding and bringing it to a sound condition, but also to level the the floor of both sides of the door. On the hyphen connecting the west wind to the north wind, you have a secondary entrance. And what they did for that entrance is that they pour a concrete ramp, also non ADA compliant, on top of the existing original granite steps. We're proposing to remove this and improve accessibility and very differently in this location. We also have the need, this is an all electrical building lead, and we also need to have the need to install an elevator, a generator that needs to be placed above the design floor elevation, needs to be raised. So we're also proposing to enclose the elevator within a mechanical enclosure of the same nature than the enclosures that we're using on the rooftop. And it will be located on these blind wall, windowless blind wall on the west side of the north wind. More photograph of the enclosures and the mockups, they get closer from the north wind. Going back to the south facade, this is a nonexisting original bulkhead installed in the 50s. The original building had a small stoop with a few steps. We're proposing to remove this existing nonoriginal condition that is, that consists of face brick and paint cast on coping at the very top. So in a nutshell, so these are the three mechanical enclosures that we're talking about. And then the changes to the entrances that we're proposing are going to be on the south facade and also on the on the west facade with the ramps. And then the rebuilding of these entrances on the west and north facade. The generator, oh, I'm sorry, it's not showing here. The generator will go here on the west facade of the north wing. So this is the north wind, the south entrance is existing entrance. This is all, all this is grass. They have a narrow path from the curb to this non ADA compliant ramp and the nonoriginal bulkhead that we're proposing to remove. And what we're trying to create is just a more pleasant entrance so that people, whether they're coming from Yankee Pier or from the 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 landing on the north end of the island, they can just come in and out of the, into this building with grace and facility. Again, this is Governor's Island where people pretty much walk on the street. There is not a lot of carts. And also, the other thing that we're trying to keep in mind is that whatever we propose here has to kind of be designed in a way that is harmonious with this kind of Neo Georgian presence of the building. And we hope that the visuals that we shall later convey that. These are elevation, existing and proposed elevations of that front entrance. The existing finished floor is roughly four feet above the ground. So we have to take a number of steps. And that's also why that ramp has to be there to provide accessibility. On the north facade on Comfort Road, this is existing condition that I mentioned, where we had this ramp that had obliterated the original stoop. We're proposing to remove this concrete slab and then reinstate the original stoop, but we're planning to rebuild it seven and a half inches higher. So then now the stoop and the finished floor are level. And you have continuity between the interior and exterior. This is on the north, the east facade of the north wind, where you have another ramp adjacent to the granite stoop that we're proposing to remove. And we're proposing also to rebuild this tube so that it's it's higher and is aligned with with the finished floor of the interior. And these are sections that kind of indicate what the existing condition is. So you have that step there for the granite. And then the rebuild, that rebuild granite stoop will be aligned with the proposed condition. So we're adding a step in each of them, but we're trying to do that in a way that stays within the confines of the perimeter of the existing stoop. And then on the west facade of the north wind, we're proposing to remove this concrete ramp that is poured over the granite steps. And then rebuild the granite steps, in fact, rebuild all that granite landing. And we have to bring them up seven and a half inches higher so that the floors are aligned inside and outside. And then provide accessibility through a new ramp that we're placing, not in the center of this this assemble, but adjacent to the building wall. These are existing and proposed elevations of the the ramp and the sections kind of showing, you know, how the existing granite is is lower than the finished floor and that the finished floor will be level with the rebuilt stoop. We're doing something similar on the west wind where we're also proposing to remove and rebuild entrances made out of granite so that we can accomplish the same goal. Existing and proposed conditions of that stoop showing on the west, on the west side, showing how the the granite stoop will be rebuilt to make those two levels. So these are the images of what we're proposing. This is the proposed new entrance on Kemble Road. Couple of things to note here. This building was built by the military. Therefore, it was also built with flood and flooding in mind. There's a series of openings along the bottom of the building in the next slides. I'm going to be able to show you that. And that allowed the waters to come in and flood the basement or the cellar in this case. And this is something that we want to retain. We can't change this because we don't want to have a situation where we need to submit the building to lateral loads that it was not designed for. So this new entrance that we're proposing is designed with that in mind to allow the water to go through. It's made of a galvanized steel system with galvanized decking grading on the, on the on the, on the, on the steps and also on the ramp. The idea here is also that there is a new transitional pavement treatment between the curb and the ramp and the, and the steps that is made out of permeable brick. It's the same type of permeable brick, brickwork that you find elsewhere, especially in Nolan Park in the Historic District, in the Governor's Island Historic District. Another view of, oops. Another view, existing and proposed, looking at the, from the existing facade of that original portion where we are relocating the, the building and, and showing you the intention of creating this kind of three-sided entrance that is, it makes that entrance welcome. And then the effect of the proposed galvanized steel grading that we're also aiming could be somehow, it clearly stating that is a new nonoriginal condition, but the finish itself, it kind of resembles the many granite stoops that are adjacent through, adjacent to it and throughout the building. Another view on Kimmel Road showing the, the proposed pavement, perforated brick, perforated brick pavement, the new galvanized steel perforated grading and the proposed new entrance. And these are some of the existing granites tubes that we're proposing to repair in this case and rebuild on all the cases that have provided a similar finishing, at least in, in shape. This is the east facade where we have, we're doing the same treatment on the, on the stoops. And we're also proposing a recycling enclosure that were replaced very carefully, not perpendicular to the building so that it wouldn't compete by, not parallel to the building, but perpendicular so that it wouldn't compete with it. And just right below that string course that define what is actually the finished floor, roughly the finished floor throughout the floor. The doors, the window replacement, all the interior work, the facade restoration and all that has been reviewed at top level. So I'm not talking too much about this. Here's the west facade where we're proposing to pretty much rebuild this existing granite and stoop and bring it aligned with existing finished floor. Here's the existing and proposed condition at the west facade of the north wing, where we're proposing to remove this ramp and rebuild the granite stoops and rebuild that granite entrance, bringing it higher. And then installing also a ramp that would have a similar treatment to the ramp proposed on the south side with galvanized steel and perforated grading. Here's a mockup of the generator and a render of what that generator enclosure will look like along with the same, that will have the same treatment louvers that will have the rooftop enclosures that we are proposing. On the west facade, on the east facade of the north wing, here's existing condition, that ramp that I mentioned that we are removing and the granite stoop that we are removing and rebuilding so that it will be level with the finished floor. And here's the north facade where we are removing that ramp and, and reinstating the original two-sided stoop with precast. This is also showing the rebuilt stoop on the, on the north, on the east, east facade of the north wing and a very subtle treatment with this kind of oval configuration on, on this ground that will become an, an exterior event space. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Chen?
Thank you for a very thorough presentation, very well thought out. Given that the, the, the site limitations, really the, the high visibility of any rooftop addition, in the area where you have the generator enclosure, was there any consideration to maybe relocate some of the rooftop unit in the, on the ground like near the generator area where it's less visible and with an enclosure? Was that ever analyzed?
We were trying to make that generator enclosure smaller. It's too larger than what I would wish to be. So we, because we have, it had to be above the DFE and it has, the generator equipment has a given height, we wanted the enclosure to be as tall as the equipment. So the notion of adding more mechanical equipment and making that enclosure bulkier, it's one that we tried to stay away from. We felt that it would be better and also more efficient to have all the equipment for that north wing on the roof. You will see that from, no matter where you are, you, you're going to see stuff on the roof here. So we felt that that would be better preferable than having an even bulkier enclosure for the generator. So we tried to strike the right balance between functionality, visibility, appropriateness and.
Yeah, I just thought, given your approach from the Yankees Pier, that the, the first building you're going to see when you get off the ferry is obviously that, I think that's on the roof on the, on just near the generator rooftop. And so which one is the, has a lesser impact, whether it's on the roof or it's on the ground is, was my questioning.
If I can answer to that, and I would say that if it's on, the generator on the ground would only be visible at that area if you were to come from the west and go around the building. If you're coming from Kimmel Road, you wouldn't see it because it's on the west facade of the north wing, so.
No, I was thinking of the rooftop unit on the Kimmel Row unit. Can it be relocated to the ground right next to the generator since you're already enclosing that area anyway?
I, I follow the thought and I'll be honest to tell you that what we were trying to do is just try to minimize the size of the equipment on the ground because you want to, you don't want those things to be so pervasive and have such a strong presence. So the goal was just to make it smaller.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsberg.
I have two questions. Did you look at using stainless steel instead of galvanized steel?
Yes, the, we, we tried to stay away from stainless steel. It tends to be shiny and especially the extent of metalwork that will be required for this large entrance would probably make it a little bit too shiny. This is a south-facing facade, so I would be concerned about glare. And I think that the, the thought was that galvanized steel would give us a, a duller finish.
There are ways of getting stainless to be dull. Then the other thing is you don't have in your presentation any pictures of the materials, correct?
I don't think that we have specific photograph of the actual galvanized grading.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I know that when we spoke, you were very careful about the facade from the water side on, on Kimmel. And I think you've done a wonderful job in terms of thinking about that and that view. And yet the stair, stairs that you're doing are going to be galvanized steel rather than granite. Can you talk about that, how it affects the visibility there and the reason that you did that rather than granite?
So we, it has to do with flood resistance and flood resilience. This building is designed to flood. And I promised something that I didn't do, which is showing you some photograph of that. Talk about. So there are a series of vents at the cellar level that allow for the water to get in and flood the crawl space and the cellar of this building. So we didn't want to impose an opaque structure that would either prevent the flow of floodwaters when the water rises and, and floods the building, nor that it would impose lateral loads on the building. So we've designed a structure that would be permeable, let the water go through, let it just go through so that we don't really fight the floodwaters the way that the building was designed. We had flood-resistant devices at all the doors that are installed on interiors that's being reviewed by staff, but you don't see them from, from outside. So the thought here was just really let the water flow. Let it, let it be whatever it is, it's been in this building. Let us not pretend that we have something that is, that it works otherwise and let us just embrace this, this fact that in this particular case, flood resistance implies the water goes through, comes in and it stops within the building where you have all this flood barrier. So if, if that was the concept, if we, what we wanted to do is just make sure kind of we could embrace it and show it. And if you look at the way that those flood-resistant devices are, are being shown on interior, they're very visible in a way that can tell the story. So conceptually, that was the idea, that to embrace what was happening as opposed to creating, creating new barriers that would send a signal different to what's really happening. And more importantly, we were very concerned about imposing lateral loads on the building structure as it relates to floodwaters and closing some of those openings that would create a situation where you would get more water coming in from other places at a higher velocity and impose lateral loads in the basement. So that's one of the, the concerns that's struggling in your hat.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chapin.
We have a few. First, on, on this side, you're, you know, obviously looking at flood management, but I'm wondering, do the stairs need to be as broad as they are and, or as large? And also, you know, making a non-permeable surface instead of having grass or some kind of, you know, I mean, the grass seems to be doing fine there. I wondered if you consulted with the EP at all about, you know, sort of a more, let's call it environmentally friendly approach to the landscape as far as, you know, flood, flood management and so forth.
First, brick pavements are very common throughout the district. The whole Nolan Park, all those pathways are built up brick pavers. These are permeable. The idea is just the water doesn't pond and it just go through. So these are, these are still permeable. We, we know we're taking grass away and putting brick. That's usually a no-no. But we also have to make sure that we have a welcoming entrance. The idea here is that people may be coming, yes, from Yankee Pier, from this direction, but also from the north and the north ferry and then coming down through this area. And the idea was that regardless of where people are coming from, they could just have an easy access into the building. And that was the idea of just having this side and this side and then the front side. So it's just about enhancing access. This is kind of like a remote location. If you're going to get there in the ferry, we wanted to make sure that people would have it easier going in there. And more importantly, that there would be a very clear kind of visual vocabulary that would make it clear what's the main entrance. Because all those secondary entrances that we're rebuilding are only egress. So yes, they're there, but you're not going to get in there. So this is a little bit of a gesture with some restraint to make sure that it's very clear what the main point of access is, which is where the ramp is, where these new steps are.
Two other small questions. One is on the north wing, west entrance. Is the height of the railing necessary for the handicapped access? It seems like the railing is kind of high there.
It's forty-two inches. I don't know if the renders will make it look a little bit.
Access, but the front, in the front. There you go.
I think, keep in mind that part of what's happening is that this existing granite finish is going up. So if you compare this point to that point, yeah, this one's going to be higher because the entire stoop is going to be rebuilt higher.
I just wondered if the height was necessary, otherwise I don't have any problem with it.
These, these are forty-two inches mandated. I wouldn't be surprised if these are thirty-six inches all code. We need to bring it to co-compliance from making it forty-two. But we, we don't want to make something taller than what it needs to be.
Okay, so the third question is that the north entrance you've replaced, you have a sort of a curve now instead of, and I just wondered why you, it's, you've got grass inside the curve, which is a little odd. You know which one it's the north entrance. There you go. You see how the, the curve, you replaced it from a straight to a curve, but then you left grass inside the curve, which to me looks a little peculiar. That'd sort of go one way or the other, either curve the thing, get the grass outside. I mean, you could curve the other side too, as far as that goes. But having gone from a straight path, it, it just looks odd to me.
No, I see. I don't think that I have a, a side plan here that shows the landscape treatment, but in reality, that's, that is just an ellipse, an ellipse that is here and is trying to define an exterior area. There was a lot of discussions about whether we should surface inside the ellipse, outside the ellipse. That elliptical space, that, that ellipse is defining an exterior event space that allows the tenants to, to kind of demarcate where their exterior events happens and have a more clear delineation of what the public, the public way is, which is the Comfort Street is a narrow street. And instead of just leaving it all open, there was a deliberate move to just have at least a clear delineation that is just marked by those, those brick pavers. But it's not just a little curve here. It's actually an ellipse that creates an elliptical outdoor space that delineates with that.
Yeah, I, I understand that and think it's fine. It's just I think that then you should modify the walkway or the grass on the other side.
But I think the grass is larger than the ellipse. So on all four corners, you, so you have a large grass area and then a defined ellipse in the middle of it. So it, it looks like a extra piece, but I think it's what you see all the way around.
That is correct.
A full view of it. So what you're saying, it's going to look a little less strange. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I don't know if in the building plan, if you could sort of show where it is.
Yeah, I can, I can.
We, we have the landscape plans. I don't think that the presentation only includes a couple of original building plans, but not in the appendix, but not. I don't think that we have, we don't have to, so anyway, I don't, I don't have that landscape plan here.
Okay, thanks. All right, other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who'd like to speak on this item? All right, noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
All right, anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. First will be Roger Manning. I'll be promoting it to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself. State your name for the record and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello everyone. You can hear me now, I guess, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Roger Manning, co-founder of Magic, the metro area Governor's Island Coalition, a public group that's concerned with the, the general public's use of Governor's Island, which is largely outdoors and enjoying the, the sort of non-urban aspects of Governor's Island, which is definitely a refuge for, for people and wildlife and that kind of thing. And just a couple of questions here, but also just want to express our, 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 our pleasure of this historic building reuse activity here, reusing the historic buildings of Governor's Island. We, we definitely support that. With regard to HVAC and, and the generator area, our main concern, yes, of course, there's a visual impact, but what we hope to encourage or see is noise attenuation. Where the generator is on that, I guess it's the north wing, west end of it, that's a particularly pastoral little area there with the grass and the trees between buildings. And anyway, so, you know, of course, there's only so much you can do when you have HVAC and generators and electrical equipment in terms of noise. But we're hoping that part of the design is baffles or whatever it would take to make these, these items less impactful on the, the outdoor experience there. Of course, you know, that probably wouldn't affect nearby buildings so much, but it's outdoors that gets affected right now, you know, you don't, none of that's turned on and it's, it's quite, quite beneficial to have the sort of non-urban experience out there from electrical equipment. So yes, noise attenuation question. And just really quickly, we were going to ask about the flooding aspect of that building. That's interesting to hear about the design that intentionally floods and, and, and maybe, I guess that we don't need to hear anymore about that, I guess, to explain that. So noise attenuation question. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function if you wish to speak. Seeing none, I will note that Manhattan Community Board One recommends mixed approval opposing the perforated galvanized steel steps, ramp and landing at the proposed location as the material may present maintenance issues.
Okay, right. Would you like to respond to the questions?
I'll respond to the issue of noise. These are mechanical enclosures that provide some sound attenuation. We can provide the information as to how much. You have to keep in mind that the purpose of the generator is to deploy it and put it into use in the event of a flood. So when there is a flood and then the elevator goes on and then all of those businesses can remain at least online or connected and the building power, that area will not be as pastoral as he rightly says, once it's been re-lanscaped. So I understand the concern, but I think it's important to keep in mind that the generator is just not to be permanently used, but it's only to be used during that type of emergency situation where potentially like what happened during Sandy, that the island flooded, the power went off. And the idea here is just to reassure through the generator and the flood-resistant devices to the businesses that are working on climate solution, climate solution, that if they come to occupy the historic building, they're not going to be completely disrupted and 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 their business is going to be destroyed because of the because of the next flood. So that there is an idea of resiliency that is kind of built into it. So that's that's when the generator will be put into play. So.
Any final questions? Yes, Commissioner Lutfi.
Questions or further out that kind of screen it a little bit and add to the visually to the line?
We can window dress it, but I think the 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 plan here is to have some some type of degree of honesty about what it is and the many pieces that made this building together. So we had long discussions as to whether or not we should have it or not. It is in there. But it's the proposal is just to kind of show it as it is and 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 use it as part of the story to be told about this building and for these people's occupant. You need a big piece of electrical equipment to keep the building running. So we don't put it on the roof because it's too heavy, so we have to keep it on the ground. So we never had any intention to kind of window dress it, to 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 make it disappear. It's bulky. We just tried to make it as small as possible. But yes, any landscape intervention that will be possible. Yes, that could definitely be a possibility. If if there could be ivy going up and kind of soften, as the person on the testimony said, that there is a there is this pastoral nature of the island and certain concrete. So it's I can see ivy going up that and being us being intentional about from a landscape and planting perspective to ameliorate the effect of this this kind of bulky. I think that could be incorporated. I don't have an issue with that. Oh, the west wing. The render is a little bit too bright. These are concrete curbs like they exist throughout the island. There is no intention in doing anything other than concrete curbs as you have throughout the island. There is a change on the on the the material here. We didn't want to bring the papers this, but but this this I can see it from here, how bright it is, but it is it's it's a render issue. This is a concrete curb, nothing really out of the ordinary, consistent with what is there right now. No, the steps are granite. The step are granite. So all that is, those are granite slabs. And this is going to be removed, salvaged and reused to the extent that is possible. And then we'll have new steps. You right now have one, two, three steps and the steps below the door. And then we have now one, two, three, four. All that will be rebuilt in granite.
And the curb essentially matches what's there now.
The curb is matching, it's DOT standard, DOT, concrete curb, nothing really out of the ordinary. We're not trying to make a statement on the curb.
So in the landscaping plan, that ellipse is the only thing that is sort of a different, unique feature.
Correct. There's some grading associated with that so that we can made the brownstone wall of the adjacent building. And that's why the ellipse was just trying to delineate the exterior space. This is it. But from a landscape perspective, that's the main move. The rest is just accommodating circulation and nothing.
They put up the site plan for a moment. I've got that on.
Yeah, we can put the site plan up. You can actually see where the ellipse is.
You could actually get a sense of this better because we didn't really see a landscaping plan in that sense, you know, so. I've got that on my iPad.
So here's the elliptical gesture that it's aim to create a confined or a well-defined exterior area between the north facade and the east facade.
And everything around it in the field is grass.
Everything, everything remains open. It's Governors Island. We're not going to block anything. Where the leaseholder cannot block anything. The part of the deal with the trust is that everything remains open. People move right, left, north, south, right. There is no reason to to block anything. We're only, the only thing that we're blocking is then generator enclosure, we're creating those entrances. And then we're creating a delineated area where they can have an outdoor event and then have the right to say, within this ellipse, we have an event today, the entrance is limited, you can continue to walk around Comfort Road during an event. But the idea was just to for the leaseholder to be able to have an outdoor event. They would need an area that they could delineate. And that that ribbon, that of bricks, create that space and helps to have that delineation. And the ellipse kind of meets the road at two points right here in front of the the traditional main entrance and then almost right here in front of the the east entrance to the north wing. And that north wing being a multipurpose space, which is the one that could be used perhaps at times and at a rhythm and at a pace that is different. And the rest of the building will be used, which will be pretty much offices. But that could be a situation where you have an event there. So the idea is just to allow people to be, you know, that's also why we have that ramp there. So that accessibility entrance and all that through to the north wing could be separate if desired, if needed, from the main entrance into the building office use.
The final questions? Okay, so Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
Some of, thank you, Commissioner Chen. Would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed and we are looking at this particular building on the on this end of the island right across from Yankee Pier. And we have been, over time, looking at adaptive reuse of many buildings on the island. And I think it's always wonderful to continue to see the buildings being used and the historic district being a kind of functional and critical part of everything that's happening on Governors Island. And so in this case, we're looking at a new use for this building, which does involve making some changes to entrances as well as mechanical equipment that we're looking at today. In addition, this, because of its location, it needs to address rising waters and floods. So the changes that we're seeing are also being responsive to those conditions. And I think it's actually kind of interesting as this as Governors Island and the Trust for Governors Island has envisioned this island to be a sort of center for climate solutions, that this sort of seeing these kinds of changes, I think, fits within the spirit of that as well as, you know, making these buildings continue to have long-term uses. So we'll have our discussion on the rebuilding of the entrances, the steps and the mechanical equipment. Commissioner Lutfi, do you like to start this one?
You know, as you said, Sarah, well, the all of the changes to Governors Island have been over time, you know, very thoughtful. They've been wonderful additions. This still, this island has been activated in a really wonderful way that enables New York residents and residents visit to come and appreciate it, participate in the offerings and really gain an understanding of the history behind it. And I think it's wonderful overall. And this is yet another important step in in, I'm going to use a word that you use, which I agree in, you know, welcoming people in a better way and then making necessary changes that do that and promote better access and use of the spaces and also preservation. So I I think with that said, I think overall the work here is has been very thoughtful and is quite good. I do have a couple of of comments to make. The first is that, that, you know, the this new proposed entrance on the south is just visually, when you look at it, just the steps, the side, you know, the I I believe that the the way the steps are sort of staggered and the way they relate visually to the building makes a lot of sense. And the approach to making it accessible via a ramp makes sense as well. What I think the issue here is, and I appreciate the the sustainability and resiliency aspect of this, but I think the the issue is the materiality. I think it doesn't quite relate as well as it could to the building or to some of the other entrances and the work that is planned for the entrances within this other entrances on the other facades of the building. So I think that there needs to be a little more work done on this. And I would recommend working with staff to explore how that could be done in a better, more compatible way while not sacrificing some of the, you know, the flood aspects. Likewise, I think on the oh, by the way, I I think the the additions to the the changes proposed changes to the north wing entrance are quite good. And however, on the northwest wing entrance, where the, you know, you have, if you could move to that page, which I think is thirty five. Yeah, that was it. Just one back. Yeah, I still think that, I think, you know, this is a good solution. But visually, that I think you want to try to create something from a landscape perspective that could possibly contribute to resilience, environmental resiliency, and just block this a little bit more because it it doesn't really go. And I don't think you have to show it that, you know, it has to like sort of stare you in the face and get in the way of the rhythm of the windows and the rest of the architecture of the building. So those, that would be my, those would be my.
Okay, Commissioner Masterson?
Yeah, I think that you've done a wonderful job in thinking this through. It's a wonderful project and it's going to, this building is going to be incredible. And I like the way that you had have thought about the Kimmel Street facade as a primary facade from the water. So I'm generally very supportive. I'm supportive of all of the changes you've made to allow for barrier-free access, all the ramps. I'm supportive of the HVAC units on the roof that are visible and yet have been thought through so that they're minimally visible and pushed towards the back. I understand the need for the generator. And so I'm supportive of the generator, the placement, as well as, you know, how you're kind of, I guess, covering it up. It's it's necessary. The one thing that I'm kind of curious about, and you know that because I asked you about it, is the galvanized steps in the front. And because they're so highly visible and you've done such a beautiful job on the primary facade, I was kind of curious as to why you didn't use granite steps. Because of how you explained it to me, I understand that there it was a purposeful decision to do the galvanized steel. So the only thing I would say is, I would think about how to make the galvanized steel relate better to like a masonry or a granite step. And I don't know how that would occur, but but to be mindful of the fact that, you know, if we could make it appear as close as possible to some type of a masonry or granite step while still retaining the purpose of it, I think it would just be very helpful overall.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldblum.
Thanks. I agree with previous comments. I think it's a great project. I have a few other minor things to throw in the throw in the bin. I think that the railings should match the existing railings, a very simple picket. Instead of using the kind of ADA handbook standard pipe railings, I think that you can have the ADA required railings as handrails. But the the guardrails and the general appearance of the railings should not be those rather utilitarian pipe rails, but should use the pickets that that characterize this building and others on the island. I think that the southeast entrance has a very extensive forecourt of pavers. I think the pavers are fine as a choice and a spec, but I think that their use is a bit extensive. And to the extent that you can limit it, and, you know, the building has always sat, for better or for worse, on on landscaped ground. It hits the ground on landscape. So to the extent that you can reduce the size of that paving at the southeast entrance to allow for more green space, you will both restore the building to a more authentic relationship to the landscape and, of course, improve permeability, which is what flooding is all about. And the oval on the other side is is kind of an odd thing, but once you explained that it's it's there for the tenant to kind of have a designated space, I understood it. And I think it's acceptable, but it should not be off-center to the two entrances that it it frames. It's kind of off-center to the main entrance and off-center to the side entrance. It, you know, it's a formal kind of classical building. And so those, so the oval should be resized and relocated to center on on those two entrances. In general, the Georgian style is such an interesting style because it's, you know, it was used at a period of time when because it's, you know, it, it was used at a period of time when modernism was kind of on the rise. And this was kind of the last gasp for institutional classicism. And it has this, you know, so many buildings from this vintage have this kind of desiccated, harsh feel to them that's very appropriate to a military installation. And I think that this building really has that quality of, of kind of institutional Georgian that oddly enough, the addition of the mechanical elements on the roof warms it up and I think gives it a sense of scale and, I don't know, proportion that make it a little bit less penal. And I think that that's a good thing. So I, in general, I think it's a good project. I think Jeanie's comment about using landscaping to conceal the generator is, is an especially worthwhile comment and should be taken, I think, further. The addition of, of, of landscaping would dramatically enhance the appearance of the building and also dramatically improve the permeability and flood resistance of the building. I mean, grass sucks, so I would encourage that to be explored.
Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Thank you. So it's great to reuse the building and it is a really good use. And in general, I found this a totally appropriate renovation. I want to comment on certain things, particularly things I know fair about. But I'd also like to point out, it would have been nice to have a rendered site plan so we could better understand the site with more information on landscaping where I think there's some real opportunities as other commissioners have mentioned. It would also have been good to have images, as we often see, of all the different materials or real samples. Done a lot with resiliency. First of all, the wet floodproofing makes total sense. And given that, I also think I get why you want to use the gradings in a number of places to allow the water to go in and to go out. I would also talk, although we are not following the national park standards, I think there are standards that say when you do a modern insertion into a historic building, it shouldn't replicate the mo- the historic building, but should clearly sort of say, I'm not original, so I can understand what's original. So I think that's fine. You, you know, I talked in the last submission about how we're going to be seeing more mechanical equipment. Given the building design, there's really no place to put it besides where you put it. I tend to agree with the comment that the pavers could be reduced. I'd also point out in terms of the generator, not only does it run when the power is out, it has to be tested, I think, every month for an hour. So dealing with the sound is an important thing, but I know their code requirements, so you're dealing with that. So I can approve this.
Commissioner Chen.
Agree with my colleagues. I think there are a lot of excellent suggestions and comment have been made. Obviously, it's great to see the fulfillment in terms of making the building more accessible and put it to adaptive reuse, making it more climate resistant. We all remember the flood pictures of Governor's Island and the, you know, the hundred-year flood scenario and how windy, how the coast got, love the word micro-use pino. And I, this is, but obviously the, the acoustic buffering with the landscaping is a good one. And I think that is consistent with the testimony and the suggestion, I think. And yeah, in general, it's a thoughtful design. I can find that appropriate.
Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I also want to praise the, you know, going to an adaptive reuse for this building, which is very important. And I support the comments of Commissioner Lutfi and others about various small, you know, things that they might look at to improve the design. And so I'm not going to repeat all of them because I don't think that's necessary. But I certainly think it's a worthy proposal and supportive.
Okay. Great, okay. So I think what we can do today is we can make a motion to approve this with the condition that the applicant continue to work with the staff on the finalizing the landscaping plan to look at opportunities to reduce paving and, and think about the resize, the size and location of the ellipse. And also to continue to work with the staff on the details of the railings and the Kimmel entrance to, I think everybody, most people here support the materiality, but sort of how to help the, maybe the finish relate better to the building.
Is it okay to kind of clarify if, if, Commissioner Ginsburg, you mentioned with stainless steel, there are other, other finish options? Brush finishes, other, other treatments that as an alternative for staff to explore, we could look at that?
Of course.
Right.
Okay.
In my opinion, at least.
Because the applicant, you know, proposed galvanized steel and other than painting it, there's not really so many options for that. And I'm not sure anyone suggested that they painted a granite color. So I think to broaden our exploration, if stainless steel and its various finishes were also an option, it would change the color and reflectivity slightly, which may or may not be a good thing, but we could look at that as an alternative.
So to, right, so to yeah, so I think we can keep it broad and sort of, okay, refine the landscape to see where opportunities to minimize the brick and think about the placement of the ellipse. And then to continue to refine the railings in consultation with staff and to explore al- alternative finishes for the entrance steps. How about that? Okay, great.
In the matter of docket twenty-five dash zero six one zero five, Governor's Island Building three oh one, Governor's Island Historic District. A neo-Georgian-style public school building designed by Eric Kivin, built in nineteen thirty-four and altered in nineteen fifty-six to sixty. The application is to modify the entrance, install ramps and stairs and install HVAC equipment. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Governor Island Historic District. I recommend that a positive report be issued with some modifications. Finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the prominent waterfront siding and large frontage on the building can support the presence of a new entrance terrace, terrace along Kimmel Road, which currently lacks an accessible or egress code compliant entry. And the proposed new entrance with wraparound stairs and a large landing, a barrier-free access ramp and metal railings will be centrally located and will scale to the building. Now, the proposed brick paving in front of the new entrance terrace will provide generous gathering spaces and access to the building from the waterfront side. Then installation of the proposed ramps at various entrances will allow for barrier-free access from north and south approaches to the building in the least intrusive manner possible. That the proposed modifications of steps and landings will involve the salvage and reuse of historic stone with removal of only a minimal amount of historic fabric. That the proposed metal handrails at the ramps, steps and landings will feature a black finish and will be simply designed to harmonize with the building. That the new salvaged granite and new red brick and concrete at the modified secondary entrances will be in keeping with the material found at the building will be consistent with entry details and materials found throughout the historic district. That the proposed generator units, which will be located in the yard at the base of the northwest facade on a raised platform due to flood zone requirements, will be obscured by brown painted bluebird metal screen enclosures, helping them to blend with the brick facades. That the proposed HVAC equipment will be obscured by brown painted bluebird metal screens, thus helping to minimize their impact when viewed in conjunction with the brick facades. That the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the historic district. And that by reactivating a long vacant building and proposed work will support the adaptive reuse of historic buildings on Governor's Island from military to a civilian use. However.
However, we recommend.
Recommend that the applicant continue to work with staff to finalize landscaping, uh, landscaping opportunities to, that, that enhance the entire area and also screen the metal gating where the new concrete building is, as well as working on opportunities to reduce paving and to also rework the resizing of the ellipse. And also work on the, the details of the railings that, that provide accessibility. And in addition, work to help
Explore.
Explore the materiality of the front stairwell so that it can be visually more compatible with the building itself and its surroundings while addressing this, the sustainability and resiliency issues.
Right, Commissioner Mastor, would you second that motion?
Second.
Right, John.
Sheriff Carroll.
Hi.
Commissioner Chapin.
Hi.
Commissioner Chen.
Hi.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Hi.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Lutfi.
Hi.
Commissioner Mastor.
Hi.
Seven favorite and opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved, thank you. All right, we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC twenty-five dash zero four six five three. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block one seventy-nine, lot thirteen, seventy-four Hudson Street in the Tribeca West Historic District. The site is currently a parking lot and the application is to construct a new building. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jordan Rogoff, partner at DXA Studio. I'm joined by Principal at DXA Studio, Sando Thorerson, who's going to do some of the presenting with me. I also have Valerie Campbell from Kramer Levin via Zoom. Our, our project involves some pretty complicated easements. So if any questions about the kind of technical aspects of that, of those easements arise, Val can help explain how that works. Our, our proposal today is, is a single-story building in the Tribeca West Historic District. I'm going to go straight to the map here. So we're on the eastern edge of the Tribeca West Historic District. And we are directly across the street from Ralph Walker's Western Union Building, which itself is outside of the district, but it has quite a looming presence that we'll kind of talk about a little bit throughout this presentation. Moving to an aerial view of the site, you could see kind of a, a unique situation, given the off-grid collision of streets here. In particular, Harrison Street kind of tees into Hudson and provides a series of, of kind of visibility considerations, which the design addresses. So we'll get into that a little bit later as well. This is, skip. Sorry. Yeah, okay. So this is the current state of the site at the corner of Hudson and Worth Streets. And it's been a parking lot since, we believe it's been vacant since the late nineteen thirties. You can see that the, the old kind of store and loft and manufacturing buildings that surround the site have an abundance of lot line windows. So that in turn resulted in the nineteen eighties in this, this kind of complex easement arrangement, which capped any potential building height on the site at eighteen feet. So that's eighteen feet above grade. And so it really limits us to a single-story building here. So when we get into the appropriateness argument or our proposal, we just ask that you keep that in mind. Because typically a, a corner site of this prominence would elicit a response more in the six, seven or even eight-story sort of massing, which we're precluded from, from doing. But also the, the easement responds to kind of a light, narrow accessibility for the adjacent three properties, which we'll explain in greater detail. So the sensitivity of developing on this site has led to, I guess, the last three months or so, we've engaged the neighbors. There's a coalition of neighbors, an organization of neighbors that we'll probably hear from a little later. And so we've gone through multiple iterations, kind of tweaking the appurtenances and massing on top of the building and made some revisions to roof heights to accommodate concerns expressed by them. While we've been able to address a large number of, of the concerns, there are some which, which unfortunately can't, which, which I'll explain a little bit in greater detail. So to give you a sense of the context in the adjacent neighboring buildings, here we have the Worth Street Building. So this is the kind of south, looking north along Worth Street to the east of our site. You can see also that the, the, the size of these buildings kind of vacillates between anywhere from five to eight stories. And then kind of slightly larger, going up to ten stories long Hudson Street. So these are, these are our neighboring buildings. And ninety, ninety Hudson in the upper left-hand corner there is one of the adjacent buildings. So to give you a sense of what an eighteen-foot single-story building looks like, this is a massing montage. You see at the corner, it, it resembles more of a taxpayer, a single-story building. And there's kind of limited history for that, that type of building in this district. But we, we dug up some examples that we'll show you shortly. And as I mentioned, the Western Union Building has a large presence. Although outside of the district, it is an individual landmark and it was worthy of consideration for our design response. These are the, the surveys and information that are tied to the easement. Our site is approximately eight thousand square feet, measuring a little over a hundred and two feet along Hudson and about thirty-four feet on Worth Street. So it's a regularly shaped site. And then this is the massing that we're proposing that is kind of filtered through the easement considerations, which is that maximum height of eighteen feet with a twenty-foot section in the, in the rear of the building that drops down an additional seven plus feet to accommodate light, narrow considerations for, for our neighbor to the east. Now, this is trying to simplify a very complicated easement that we spent a lot of time diving into and, and a lot of conversation with, with Valerie to kind of untangle. But in essence, there are three surrounding buildings on lots seventeen, twenty-one and eleven. And that kind of demising plane or cap with building height of eighteen feet is the yellow area in between those buildings and that is our site. Looking at the history, the, there was an existing building. There were two buildings actually on this site, one a printing press, the other a creamery that became famous for diluting their milk. That was a big scandal. And so I don't know if that led to the destruction of the building, but And so I don't know if that led to the destruction of the building, but but shortly thereafter, the creamery was no more. So the the site has really existed vacant and then as a parking lot. Obviously by the nineteen eighties and up up until today, so it remains as a parking lot today. Here's some more images of of the buildings that existed on the site previously, the creamery, the printing press on the left. And then a really fantastic photograph is the Western Union Foundation was starting to be built on the bottom right hand corner there. So that those span, I think nineteen twenty seven to nineteen thirty three. Thinking about of the constraints of a single story building and looking for references that existed within the district, we were hard pressed, but this is what we found. Bottom right hand corner, for those of you that were around when we presented our Seven Harrison Project with Stephen Harris. Some thirteen years ago, Staples Street has a great two story sidecar building, but a little less relevant that it was a corner lot, the other examples are. Corner lots, including a diner, but all of them kind of in the manufactured factoring style of of the of the district. This slide is kind of showing the the typical. Massing and in architecture of those of these prominent corners of which we are one. Obviously, we with that with that cap being limited to one story. It it these these references are kind of limited value as we assess. Our design response, whereas we assess our design response. These are some examples of larger bays, but what I really want to get into is we got. Really excited about in our research, this evolution of of the arch form and arch expression. Throughout Tribeca, beginning in its heyday in the late late nineteenth century and then kind of. Spanning into the early twentieth century. And and like it seeing all of this evolution and tinkering with with the arch form and gallery expression and large bays. Large bays obviously necessitated by the the predominant food industry and trade. As loading docks or or light sources for the work that was going on inside the building. Seeing, I'm gonna go straight to this, this analysis with the round arches that started. In the nineteenth century, which eventually evolved into segmental arches and then. You know, three, three centered arches, four centered arches, three centered pseudo arches. Every few years, there was kind of like another riff on on the arch form through Tribeca. And 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 then the continuation of the the larger bay expressions, but getting into the technology of of cast iron. It kind of larger span, more more delicate materiality, but the but that evolution of arches really kind of landed with us. Another kind of like charming characteristic that we saw throughout the district was the kind of augmentation of design with with terracotta and ceramic ornament. And in in this in particular, we got excited about integrating the place, the the intersection. Into the architecture as as a feature of the corner, which makes an appearance in our in in our design. But just just very quickly, I'm sure most of you are already familiar with the kind of examples of contemporary yet contextual architecture. That's been brought before the commission the past couple decades. These are just kind of a reminder of 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 those projects. Also wanted to make note that that this property came before the commission previously in two thousand eight. In this, this design was actually approved as an all glass building. So our our design is quite divergent, but if if the site looks familiar, it's because it was here before. So for facade development, I want to bring up our. Our model and and a material sample for your consideration. And and speak to the design a little bit, so as I mentioned, we were really intrigued by this kind of. History of development and experimentation with with arched form. And and we love that it was a reflection of the building technologies and kind of considerations of the day. In the night in late nineteenth, early twentieth century. We opted to go with a form that we felt was a little bit more contemporary and reflective of our time. And I think the the parabolic arch, there's a purity to the expression in that it's considered the perfect arch, that it's it's actually a representation of how forces transfer. In an arch, in an arch form. We leaned heavily on the kind of masonry. Precedent throughout the district, and so what we're proposing here is the same materiality that we presented. In ten West Seventeenth Street, the the fabric facade that we presented to you guys last last year. So it is cementitious, it's cast concrete, but it's a U H P C, it's an ultra high performance lightweight concrete. And what's beautiful about this, it's a very long lasting material, but it can it can be treated in many different ways, so what we're. The the treatment that we're proposing is actually that that sample there, which is. Almost a hybrid of of kind of the presence of brick and terracotta, so it has characteristics of both, which we felt was very. Connected to the history of of the neighborhood. Also, the infill for for these arches, I think is evocative of the cast iron, this is a painted metal. Glazing system. With a kind of spandrel down the middle that continues. And the to get to the program, because that's quite important, the our anchor tenant for for the site. Is an organization that teaches children how to swim, so it's a large swimming pool. So aspects of the design also try to reference the turn of the century swimming pools around New York City and the kind of ceramic. Architecture that supported those facilities. And the undulations trying to kind of tie into the fact that there's a pool and a large body of water inside. So there's a lot, it's kind of a synthesis of a lot of disparate ideas. It's worth noting, the the series of of renderings I'm about to show you. Show the building with and without the presence of of mesh screens that will come down from from the transom spandrel. And that is to maintain privacy in the swimming pool area, so the back two thirds of the building or the northern two thirds of the building are dedicated to the to the swimming pool. So this is obviously without. The mesh screens. And this is how they'll appear when they're deployed, also presence of street trees there. This view, I I think resonates with us quite a bit in that the presence of those arches, you see the kind of echo of the the previous application in our neighbor at ninety Hudson and then across the street. On on Harrison. That's with the screens. And then this is a montage of the. Of the elevation applied in the context. And as you can see, the there's a strong datum on ninety Hudson at at their storefront, and there's also kind of a. The presence of the Western Union Building and the projected Ralph Walker's projected arcade, also kind of an arched arcade. Albeit at a at a greater scale, but we felt that that there was a there's there was great continuity or at least communication between between these three properties. This is just a a simple elevation, the arches are about sixteen feet tall by thirteen feet wide. And then to speak briefly about the site and some of the challenges with the with with the neighbors. The pool requires a tremendous amount of mechanical equipment to to handle the humidity and the and the air turnover and filtration. So we have package units that need to be located directly above the pool and conversation with the neighbors. We talked about trying to move that and unfortunately, it's not really feasible with the system. Without increasing the size of the equipment and and duct work associated with it, and then that increases the amount of visibility. So what we have here, our solution is to make the absolute smallest in shortest units. Since visibility from from the right of way. Limitations of the mechanical equipment, easement considerations and code considerations, this in our estimation was the optimal arrangement. Some of the other changes we made as a result of conversation with the neighbors, does this laser work?
That's a great point.
Yep, that is a no, I'm gonna come up here then. Initially, we had a bulkhead, like a service bulkhead for stairs, they'd come up to the roof and service the equipment. And some of the neighbors were concerned about the the presence of of a bulkhead here. So our solution was to actually move the stair, eliminate that, drop the roof. So that there's no approach from the front. Those windows. So there there have there have been a number of conversations, we've gone to community board a couple times, we've met with the neighbors, and so it's been. A negotiation and revisitation of design to try to accommodate a lot of those concerns. The other thing I'll say, the this rooftop is not occupiable. And we're following local law ninety two and ninety four and preparing it as a green roof, so it'll it'll have sedum. Which are, you know, plants about four to six inches tall, covering the entirety of the rooftop there. From a plan perspective, just to give you an overview, the swimming pools located in the northern portion of the property. We did step the foundation in to avoid any sort of underpinning or disruption to the the neighboring building, so. Sacrifice the little bit of of subsurface space to to simplify the kind of structural. Insertion of the building, so that's what that kind of darker poche is, and then as you see the. The the building that we're proposing, about seventy percent of it is dedicated to the 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 swimming business. And the bottom portion at the corner is another retail condo. For which we don't have a tenant yet, but it's ideally suited for a cafe or a kind of a smaller, a smaller retailer, commercial operation. And roof plan, the the plan on the left is noteworthy, because that is our access up for for maintenance and up to the equipment. And as I mentioned, the back portion of the roof has been set down an additional seven plus feet to accommodate the light and air considerations of the neighbors. And with that, I'm gonna turn over to Sandy.
Hello, as Jordan said, I'm Sando, I'm a senior publicist, principal at DXA Studio, I've been working on this with him. The sections are particularly helpful, here you can see kind of that drop seven foot kind of recess that's. Partly a product of the easement's interpretation. One of the things that it allows us to do as well is access to the roof to that level without a stair bulkhead that we have to somehow navigate visibility on. And then we'll have a ship's ladder for access to the higher roof with mechanical equipment to see. Some other kind of things and it just just because they always come up with community board was that eighteen feet is is an average height taken from a historical survey. And then working with Val, kind of honed in on what what that means in terms of the parapets allowable obstructions. So in the section, you can see along the street wall, we have the kind of typical forty two foot parapet, which we're really utilizing to kind of. Even at least a little bit more height in terms of contextuality of the project, and then if you see kind of in the background of this one and on the far right as we on the adjacent buildings. Proposing a minimal six inch curve, we've done a bunch of surveys with with the clients helped really kind of lock in exactly where these windows are and all these three different buildings facades. And these ones are the ones that are enshrined in those kind of easement protections. So this is the longitudinal section going north south, so you can see it going through both tenants, there is a general kind of slope to the side, north to south. That we're kind of dealing with, and I'll get into that when we talk about kind of the precast bays. But in general, here you can see on the right, we have the option of that transom band allowing us for an install of integrated blinds on the interior. For the pool section, and then on the left, you see the the slab can step down to the lower entrance to that kind of white fox tenant for the future. So here's the the southern elevation, and it's just a great way to kind of get into the typical bays, and I'll talk a little bit about the U H P C for anyone's unfamiliar, it's very similar to G F R C, which is glass reinforced. This is reinforced with polyvinyl alcohol fibers, which just means it's finer, you can get a little bit more variation in terms of. The the concrete composite and the rendering potential of what you can do. It can come blasted, etched, it comes in a coating that you can play with to kind of intensify that texture, and that coating is also kind of primarily meant as an anti graffiti. So thinking about how these are built, all of our vendors have the same idea in mind, you take a singular arch bay. It'll be cast as two components with a with a mechanical joint at the top of the arch, and I'll get into those joints and their typologies on a later slide. But here, I'm gonna, this refers to two sections, we have a section through kind of the arch and transom condition, and then a section through the pier. But avoiding those joints, so we can talk a little bit about another construction of this. So on the left, you have, like I said, the the top of the arch and the perfect condition that we we mentioned. And then to the right, we have a section just off of the kind of joint of a singular kind of. Round to parapet precast module. And so because it's ultra high performance concrete, it's lightweight, it can be a very thin shell with integrated rigid insulation, it'll typically be hung on our slab or our or our perimeter beam. And anchored to the to the ground floor foundation as a kind of singular monumental expression. One great thing about that is we're able to round the parapet without some sort of break metal coping, it really gives a sense, you see in the model, we've kind of played with that three dimensionality to really kind of. Kind of pump up that sense of masonry and tectonics. And then worth noting, I'm gonna walk over there as well. Down here, it's it's a super, it's a super robust product, but because we're casting a monumental shell, should there be any kind of salt or shoveling or. Dog urine damage, we are proposing a water coursing, and as we're on a slope, we're aligning that as we step down with the storefront kind of eight inch toe kick at its minimum that kind of grows with the slope and continues to step down. And so where that datum kind of comes, if I go back, you can see at the bottom there, as we step down that slope, the pier will transition. To a a cast stone product that we've worked with multiple vendors, they all guarantee that that sample that you see beside the model. The the reddish brick color is the control sample that we've been using to develop all of our samples for both the U H P C. The cast stone as well as all of our kind of color match joints, we have a team at Dow that can computer match any color that they've assured us, so that comes into play when we get into talking about the joints. And then here you can also kind of see the depth of facade that we're we're really working with to try to express that kind of kind of masonry have to feel. This slide gets into both signage and lighting, so we are proposing two blade signs, one at the entrance on Hudson. And they're completely compliant with the regulations of the district, the manufacturing district sense in terms of proportion and height. They'll all be painted metal, they'll be the same color, the lighter kind of. A kind of faux and a copper patina that we're working with with the mullions, and then the lettering is that darker color that's sitting there, I have a I have a material palace slide coming up. So the blade signs are unlit, and then the entrance signage is that detail in the middle, we're proposing kind of just grafting on to that transom band with a with a minimal kind of light of the lettering. And then you'll see at the piers, and we can show them in plan too where they're located, the depth of the facade to avoid any kind of light pollution or distractions. We're proposing a light that would be baffled and and just up like that in a very architectural sense cast into the into the concrete within our property line. Okay, there you go, so here we have a plan, you can see the lights on either side of the pier, you can see that joint in the middle that we are expressing kind of willfully. We're putting it around two inches right now to allow for the blade sign to integrate into there kind of naturally. So here you can see the two kind of sides of of a pier that would be leaned up with that seam running down the middle. And then on the top right is our us kind of coming back to that kind of whimsical precedent that we saw in the district, we're gonna work to with the vendors. To cast in the Worth Street and Harrison kind of corner there, we really like that idea, so Hudson a corner there. But you can see here, it is a kind of thinner shell, gives us the opportunity for a lot of insulation, depending on vendor, this that that the guts of this will will differ a little bit, but in general, this is the concept that they've all agreed upon moving forward. But in general, this is the concept that they've all agreed upon moving forward. And so this is a very simple drawing, but it just shows inside on the right, outside on the left. Should they not want the blinds, we can we can just kind of adhere to the typical storefront condition, but we're we're going for, because it would fall within kind of the eighteen inches of your purview, a very minimal detail of a boxed line running down. But here I'll talk about the joints a little bit. So these are color-coded. It's a little bit easier to understand in three D because we do have this corner joint that is a very a tip. It's the one kind of non-modular a typical condition. So the green are the the two-inch joints that I talked about, that we do want to express as this kind of modular kind of rhythm that marches down the facade. It's about two inches generally. It will be cocked with a Dow color-matched chemical, as will all the joints. Then when we talk about that center line above the arch, that's the one we want to hide. Right now, vendors, we can get it between a half inch and one inch. We're proposing a one inch here. That's what you're seeing in the renders. And then that will be what sets the faux the faux mortar pattern for the rest of the building. So that that one is just kind of completely camouflaged in in the color-matched cup and the same size of of the faux masonry joints. And then the kind of standalone joint is that corner joint we're working with. There's different ways to leave, avoid, or cut away from a precast module at these two corners. And we're just going to be kind of forthright about that, where where we have this kind of open corner as an expressed aesthetic kind of condition. So this is going to the material palette. The top left square is the sample that you're seeing in front of you. The one on the right is our control sample. We were asked to pick a particular, this is what we're sharing, like I said, with all of our manufacturers and our vendors. So that is the color for all of our bulkheads, which are minimally visible, which we'll get to in a second. It's the color of all of our our computer-matched color hucking, and it's also the color of our cast stone. So their idea is that it will all kind of disappear. And then the two color samples on the bottom, like I said, any of the the storefront system, the signage will all be in the lighter kind of patina green, and then the darker is just for the lettering for contrast and readability.
Visibility studies?
So you'll see on the right, we did a bunch, but the only ones that we'll talk about today are the ones where it is minimally visible. So this is the view from the the arrow on the furthest south on Hudson, you can see. You actually, I'd have to zoom in here if you can see it. It's just a sliver, and that's why we color matched it to to the UHPC. But that's that's the max extent of our visibility from the south. This is our max extent of visibility. It's actually that far left arrow on the key plan. It is just outside the district boundary. It's the most visible. You can see, but even zooming in, you can see it is a slur. It's a non kind of, it's a non-presence. And then go closer, the next step in the number seven on the key plan, that shows where it starts to be visible on Worth Street. And then we just return back to this view that we really like because of kind of the texture and different heights of buildings and and the multiple kind of iterations of arches that we're talking about here. It's not visible. And that's really a presentation. I have an appendix here that has all the other visibility studies. I don't think you need to see them.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chen?
Very interesting design and proposal. Just wondering, the the proportion and the aspect ratio from the the base to the top of the arch or the parapera and the distance between the top of the parapera and the roof line? The parapet line?
So our first and foremost priority has always been to get as much height as possible here. Roughly, I think we're at thirteen feet open bay, so roughly about sixteen feet bays. And then the height of the arch is roughly about sixteen feet because of our roof buildup. And then we have the standard forty-two inch forty-two inch parapet condition. But we did, we have been playing with different proportions. We really wanted to get a regular arcade expression, and so it's a product of all.
Thank you. Other, yes, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I just have a question about the signage. I I like the way it looks, but I noticed that the name of the institution, which is a cute name, is the Goldfish Swim School. So I'm wondering, are you going to fit that into the space or or would you have to do two rows or how would you handle that?
That is great. So is it visible here in my shot? It does say Goldfish Swim School there. That was sort of a condition of the lettering size, it was seven inches rather than maximum.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? All right, not seeing any questions. We'll take testimony and then we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing anyone. Oh, yes, please come up. And come to the microphone and you can state your name and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Two items for the record. The verse which I appreciate is not per view of commission. I feel compelled to note for the record, given some materials in the presentation that we have advised by our 100% free frame. There are some issues with compliance of the current designs that has been presented with the terms of our reasons. And secondly, it was not the greatest in order to present this presentation of these materials. There is currently a dispute regarding property lot lines as relates to tax law maps and preferences to those that may be used for them. That being said, as the DXA team noted, we are in current discussions with the development team. And we remain cautiously optimistic that with some design modifications to the external portions of the building and some other resolutions that we can reach a mutually satisfactory solution with respect to those matters. The second item is with respect to one of those potential design changes that we are requesting. We think that the community and the aesthetics of the project would be best served by relocating mechanical units to the middle of the southern portion of Route Seventy. While we understand that this could result in some additional changes to the views as we're presented, as well as some additional duffware changes required by the tenant as shorted reference. We believe that this would be or could be addressed by appropriate screening. This would have the additional benefit of mitigating the views from the street of the southern portion of the Westerly Wall of Wentworth, which as you can see from the photographs that DXA provided, that potentially on the page, is currently yellow and weathered and is fully out of character with the store character.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right, not seeing any other hands. I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
All right, anyone joining us via Zoom who'd like to speak, please use the raise hand function. First, we all have Christina Burden Conroy. I'll be promoting you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, founded in New York City in nineteen sixty-six, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our nineteenth and early twentieth century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interior and civic art. Now, our review committee found this application difficult to understand on several levels. Now, regardless of possible limitations of zoning and easements, we find a one-story building on this prominent corner site surrounded by six and seven-story buildings to be inappropriate. It doesn't appear that the restrictions prohibit a taller building at the front of the lot. Both the present proposal and the one previously proposed would leave this corner looking like a proverbial missing tooth. We also found the proposed design difficult. The commission has approved approved many modern-style buildings, which we'd agree are exciting and appropriate additions to the city. On Board Eighteen, you can see photos of some of them. Unfortunately, these photos expose our concerns with the present design. The design defies most of what we know about how to be a good neighbor in a historic district. If you examine the photos, you'll see that many of the precedent buildings are a similar height to their neighbors. They create a strong street wall on the block. You'll also see that many were designed with a discernible base and an obvious cap. A strong base establishes a building's relation to the street. A strong cap provides a defined silhouette. The concept of base shaft and top is a well-established design principle. Even for buildings of a modernist style, the concept has long been used to help these buildings fit comfortably into a historic context. The design being proposed today lacks any sense of these divisions, giving it the appearance of an intermediate floor of a much taller structure. The exaggerated scale of its features only emphasize its "look at me, I'm different" aesthetic. We urge the commission to reject this proposal and have the applicant apply historic preservation design standards that result in in-full buildings respectful of and harmonious with their historic district neighbors. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have Lucy Levine.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HDC did not know about the situation with the easement when we wrote our testimony. It was very interesting to learn that. Thank you for the presentation. And with that said, I will read the testimony we prepared, which is that HDC finds this proposal inappropriate in both scale and appearance because the new building is too small for its site and street wall context, while its proposed window openings are too large in relation to the facade area. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining via Zoom? Please use the raise hand function if you wish to speak. Seeing none, I will note that Manhattan Community Board One recommends denial of the proposed design for its use of hyperbolic parabolic arches in a striking color.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Sure. The first the first item I wanted to talk
Jordan, can you just go over it?
Sure.
Just for the Zoom participants?
Yeah, no, you got it. The first item I'd like to respond to was Avon's comment about there being uncertainty or kind of disagreement with with site parameters. The only the only issue that we came across, and it was kind of thoroughly vetted by Kramer Levin and 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 other other groups, was that the tax map for the property kind of was incorrect. The the deed, all of the surveys, all the records for the property are all in in conformance or in agreement with one another. It's the tax map is an outlier. And kind of like empirically, that's not uncommon, that a tax map might be incorrect. So we, to the best of our abilities, we've confirmed that the what is attached to the easement and the deeds of the property is indeed correct. The the other issue, I think that without question, I'm not sure what the Victorian Society was referring to and and taking a look at the easement and saying that you could build a larger building. We spent two months trying to untangle the easement and find ways to realize a larger building there, and those ultimately were for this effort. So it's a pretty airtight easement, and for good reason, with the light and air considerations of the three neighboring buildings. So we were unequivocally bound by an eighteen-foot datum.
Right, any final questions?
This is Valerie Campbell from Kramer Levin. If I could add just a few notes about the easements. All of these easements are fairly longstanding. They're, one was established in seventy-nine, another in eighty-one, and the third in nineteen eighty-seven. And they were present on the property when it was acquired by Hudson Parking in nineteen ninety-nine. And as Jordan said, he they worked with the surveyor to make sure that the building that you see is in full compliance with those easements. And these easements are basically perpetual. They last as long as the buildings they benefit are in place and in use. And since these buildings are in historic districts, they're not going anywhere, and they're also fully occupied. So really, you can get a building with the massing that Jordan has proposed, or the lot remains a parking lot. I mean, those those are the choices in terms of what can go on the site, given the constraints of the easement. With respect to the dimensions of the property line, the owner had the surveyor go back, plot out the seventy-four Hudson's property meets and bounds with respect to its deeds and with the deeds of the respective neighbors. And it is true that the tax map is not correct. And in fact, if you look at the tax map, it has a disclaimer on all of the map saying that it is should not be used for boundary lines or location or used as a substitute for engineering drawings or surveys. So we are very confident that the boundaries that we are showing are consistent with the deeds and and I think the owner is also planning to try to get the tax map revised to conform with the correct boundaries.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any final questions?
One last, see if you can comment, since the testimony was talking about the amount of glass glazing area compared to versus the prior LPC approval, I would presume the prior approval has a larger surface area. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other final questions? All right, Commissioner Luthy, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
The move.
Thank you. Commissioner Masto, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed, and we're looking at this proposal for this new one-story eighteen-foot-high building on this corner. We have previously seen an application, as we just stated, and approved a a glass enclosed building. And as we know, appropriateness is a broad term and allows us to look at different kinds of approaches and find them appropriate. And so this is a proposal before us today in a different material, this cast concrete material, which has been explained and we've seen seen samples of. And it includes arches that reference arches in the district and metal and framing and signage that are in a copper clad, a copper patina finish. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum?
Sure, thanks.
I think this is appropriate. I think that basically what's being done here is building a new taxpayer. We see taxpayers all over the city in historic districts. We actually approved a tax, a new taxpayer recently, I think, the Morris Ajmi project on Canal Street, I think, is the location. So the notion that the only appropriate building is one that masses in a way that would have matched a historic building here, I think, is a relatively settled issue. We've approved buildings that are bigger and smaller than a kind of a street wall matching, cornice height matching building will be. So I think that the notion of of doing a new taxpayer, per se, is is in and of itself appropriate. I think that the design language is interesting and references in an interesting way, the, the predominance of arches in in the district. I'm fascinated by the material, and I want to get my hands on it. As somebody who finds coping to be the bane of my existence, I think it's really, really cool and interesting. I wonder how it will weather, although the fact that it has this kind of glazed coating may have it weather better than a more porous finish would. I am very, I do want to see if I can steal the the info on that, so I can, I can look at it myself. It does look very, very interesting. I think the one area where I would suggest a revisit, and and this could be done with staff, I think, is the color. I think the color is so close to the neighboring building that it looks like it wants to match but doesn't quite. And that may be a factor of the renderings, or it may not. I think that, given the variety of colors in the district and in the immediate proximity of the of the proposed building, it should not be a near miss. It should be either a match or or something different. Otherwise, I, I think the signage is relatively modest and and appropriate. I think it's, I think it'd be an interesting building. I think, I think it'd be good.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Well, I'll ask, I, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum. I, I would also look at, is this better with or without the building? I think it's better with the building. The color doesn't bother me, but working with staff, one can check how it relates or doesn't relate to the adjacent buildings, so it isn't, as Commissioner Goldblum described it, a near miss. But in general, I find this appropriate.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, I, I, I share the same sentiment. I think that the compare especially to the prior approval, where especially facing, you know, west, where you will see, you know, I always felt fearful of glazing area facing west with it. And and I think this is sensibly done, and I think my this is not only that, I think in terms of materiality of using this versus the prior design is actually superior because there's more contact. He invented a vernacular discussion, a modular, that is referencing the sort of context of the neighborhood. And it creates a, a, a module. And I think this is, the only thing that I was questioning was the proportion, obviously. You usually prefer the top to be heavy, a heavier base with a sort of a cornice like, obviously, you don't have a cornice here. But Michael's observation about that top of coping is interesting, right? It's just that we always were concerned about when the rain and the water hits with especially the, the heavier winds, that drip line and that thing, but that time will tell, as they say, mentioning, for Lou Khan.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
I find this, you know, it's a, it's an interesting modern design, which I think is is quite graceful and particularly suited actually to its use. It has, you know, having, you know, been in Parks Department, and there are lots of, I've seen lots of pools. I think it's, it's a really nice design for a, for a pool. And I think that for me, the color is not an issue because the rendering reflects that they're trying to, you know, evoke terracotta, and rendering reflects that a couple of many ways, that it's, it's slightly darker than the adjacent building, and there's a white wall next to it, and if you, from one of the aspects, I, I think to kind of give you the sense of an extension of the building because the design is is really so different and you know, so modern. So I'm not really concerned about that, and I like the color palette, you know, interaction with the, the green that's, you know, the, the use for the design and the window framing. I, I, I think it works as a statement, and I don't, I don't think the statement, while it's a little bold, I think is not, is referential enough not to be inappropriate, and so I'm, I'm for it.
All right, Commissioner Luthfi.
I want to commend the applicant on their presentation. Always really thorough in every way, and I think DXA always does this fantastic job of researching the context of the neighborhood from a historical, architectural, and use standpoint. And then they work to incorporate what they've learned into the design. And, you know, sometimes it doesn't work as well as others. In this particular case, I think it works really very, very well. You know, this is a vacant corner site with no FAR. And I think it's truly a wonderful thing. We have, we have many of these in the city, and some of what ends up in them happen to be less successful than than other buildings. I mean, certainly, the parking lot wasn't a wonderful addition. In the best of all possible worlds, these sites, when they're filled, help stitch together the landscape to the, in the best way they possibly can. I think when you look at this particular view, you can, I feel that the building, not the structure not only does that, but the thing that I'm really enjoying also is that there's this whole layering behind it that you can see. So the, you know, the variation of heights and textures and also the periods that the architecture around it you know, encompass, it's like all here, and your eye goes from the building up to the sky, which I think is also a wonderful thing. I'm, I'm kind of glad that it can't be a tall building to block out light. And there, it, it keeps it coming in to the neighborhood, which I think is very important. So I I happen to be also kind of fascinated by this material that's being used, and I love the fact that it has some terracotta in it because, again, it's a throwback to materials that were used earlier that now many builders are trying to get away from, which I don't love. And this use of, you know, the parabolic arch also, again, speaks to right in front of us some of the, the architecture in the neighborhood that I think is, you know, they just, everything seems to play off each other. The form here is simple, but it's also sophisticated. There's scoring in it. There's depth to it. I think the interplay of, of the material, this acid-etched material in the color that it is, along with the transparency of the windows and that bluish-green color of the metal works quite well. I'm glad to hear about the shades being 95% opaque from a, you know, sort of privacy, safety, security standpoint. I think the mechanical equipment is fairly visible, and I, and I commend the applicant for working as best as they can to minimize it. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mastor.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of the other comments, but I'll go ahead and address each component. I think that a one-story new building at this site is appropriate. I think that the design with the parabolic arch refers to other arches in the neighborhood, which are more rounded. But the parabolic arch, I think, basically says that this is a contemporary building and a contemporary design. So I can find that appropriate. I think the signage that we have is very modest. And then the bulkhead is not visible and appropriate as well. I agree with Diana, or was it who, whoever said that? I think that the color, because the color is so important here, I think it makes sense to work with staff to make sure that the color does that it is appropriate for this neighborhood. But other than that, I think they did a very good job, and it's appropriate.
All right, thank you. All right, and I think Commissioner Goldblum, you weren't, you didn't oppose the idea of something that's a brick or terracotta color, just the actual sample, just to make sure that it has its individual color, doesn't look like the neighboring building. So, and I think, you know, with all of our approvals, we do require staff review and approve final samples, so that can be built into this. And otherwise, I think we can go ahead and make a motion to approve that.
Regarding 74 Hudson Street, Tribeca West Historic District, the applications to construct a new building, I note that existing easements by adjacent buildings limit any new construction on the site to one story. I recommend approval, finding that the construction of the new building at this vacant corner will not eliminate any significant historic features of the site, that the alignment of the building's facades with those neighboring buildings will restore the continuity of street walls as a significant and consistent feature of the historic district, that the proposed building would be in keeping with the height and massing of other small-scale, scale, early 20th century commercial buildings found throughout the historic district, that the relationship of this one-story building to the surrounding tour and neighbors will be harmonious with the varied streetscape context, which features buildings of different sizes and proportions, that the distinctive masonry cladding and repeating pattern of the monumental base will recall in a contemporary way the combination of ornamental design and functionalism of the late 19th century and early 20th century buildings within the district, and references that monumental, the monumental arched base found at the base of numerous buildings within the district, that the sculptural forms in orange terracotta color of the proposed concrete composite cladding will be evocative of the historic terracotta found throughout the historic district, that the metal-framed glass infill will recall the openness of historic loading docks and the predominance of glazing at-large monumental windows throughout the historic district, that the proposed signage is simply designed and well-scaled to the facades, limited in number and typical of the term, in terms of placement and material finishes, that the engraved street names at the facades will be modest installations in keeping with the tradition of decorative street markers at the masonry, at masonry found within the district, that the light fixtures will be at the concrete paving adjacent to the new building will have a discreet presence and not detracting from the streetscape, and that it proposed new building will enhance the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca West Historic District, and the applicant will work with staff to make sure that the color is the right color for this particular location and for the district.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mastor, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Luthfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Mastor?
Aye.
Seven in favor and unopposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you. Good luck.
Okay. All right, we can, we're going to break for lunch right now, and we will come back at 10 minutes after 1:10. So we'll ask all members of the public currently in the Zoom to exit the meeting voluntarily, so that should you wish to return, you don't experience technical difficulties that might occur if we remove you ourselves. So we'll see everybody at 10 minutes after 1:00. Thank you, bye.
Jet Prater Rockhorn and Shane, please leave the Zoom so you can join after our break. Jet Prater Rockhorn and Shane. Shane, please leave the Zoom. All right, Shane, you will be removed, and you may not be able to rejoin.